Hello, this is Phil from No Guts No Galaxy. Welcome to another Town Hall meeting with Russ Belloc, President of Pranic Games and makers of MechWar Online. Quick shout out to everyone who is helping behind the scenes tonight. Thank you guys so much. And of course, shout out to ZSpot, he is here with us in channel, in person. Also, a quick shout out to all of you guys joining us live. We hope you enjoy the discussion and the look into the future of MechWar Online. I'm joined tonight by Darren aka Bombadil. How you doing, old man?
Old man, Han Solo is an old man. I'm not an old man. I'm doing great, thanks. I'd like to also extend a quick thank you to Zees as well for doing the transcription for tonight's meeting. Thank you, Zees. And everyone else that has helped out with preparation and execution of this, as well as the previous Town Hall meetings. There's been quite a few of them now. And of course, to all of you out there in the livestream, thank you for being here. We totally appreciate it. Russ has joined us tonight to discuss various topics within MechWar Online with a focus on the next phase of Community Warfare, but also much more based on all the questions that we've been, that you guys have submitted, the community, over the last few days. We've gathered many, many, many pages of questions from you over the last few days, and we'll get to as many of them as we can. For the most part, they're listed in order that we received them, and then by relevance and freshness, there are always a lot of repeat or overlapping questions, and we're limited by time, so if we don't get your question, please understand, and hopefully we will get to yours next time. I did prioritize a couple that said they were skipped for a couple of these, so hopefully that doesn't happen too often. But although, we may take some questions from live chat at the end of the meeting, that'll be up to Russ when we get there. Most will be taken from the MWO forum thread that's been live for the last few days, four days. So if your question doesn't get answered before the end of the meeting, hopefully you'll have another chance then. Tonight's chat will be moderated, so please keep it civil and don't be rude. And without further ado, let's get started. How are you doing tonight, Russ?
Great. I'm glad we're here to have another one of these. I think it's been a little while, right? Did we miss March?
It's been a few months.
It's been three, three months.
No.
Yeah, yeah, it's been like three months, bud.
Alright. Yeah, I'm excited. Let's get going.
Alright, so you have quite a bit to talk about before we even start, and we were talking about this beforehand. There's a ton of questions, and one of our topics that just keeps coming up is Community Warfare. You have a lot of info to go over, and I feel like a lot of these questions would be answered if you just go ahead and dive into what is coming up with Community Warfare. I think it's been referred to as Phase 3, if you will. Lots of details, and I think that would answer a lot of stuff, so let's go ahead and jump right into it. You want to break down what the heck is Phase 3, and what does that mean for the game?
Yeah, it's tough to kind of know how to jump into this. There's a lot of stuff going on right now, and Community Warfare Phase 3 is a really important aspect of what we're working on right now. But we're working on so much, so... Let me change things up a little bit and surprise you here, and let's just talk about... I think first I should talk about more the immediate future, because I know there's a lot of talk about, you know, the current map of Community Warfare, and I had mentioned that I might be looking at a map reset sometime fairly soon, so let's talk about what's gonna be going on here in the month of April. And I think that'll naturally kind of lead us into Community Warfare Phase 3 and kind of the future of Community Warfare. Does that sound fine?
Excellent.
Okay, so we have a patch coming up on Tuesday, and there's a number of things in that. The one thing we should talk about is, we have a fix for the Community Warfare game bias bug, or I guess you could call it, more of an oversight. So, just to make this clear, right now, we're exceptionally happy with how the Community Warfare matchmaking system is working. It doesn't take skill-based matchmaking into account, but otherwise, you know, it finds teams. And, you know, I think, you know, having the freedom that players have to, of any faction at any given time of the day, you know, launch an attack against any other bordering, you know, planet or whatever, and then having, you know, enemies show up like 98% of the time to have a match, doesn't matter what time of day it is. That's pretty, you know, that's working quite well. We're quite happy with that. But right now, or rather, initially, the way we thought we would solve that, we did it by a number of things. Obviously, we had a lot of improvements to the queue information, so players can tell kind of how many players are on a planet, and, you know, if they do just a little simple 12-player math, they know if, you know, they can get a match here or there. We made a lot of improvements with the Call to Arms, so that when you get one, it's legit, and means, you know, if you click on that, you're probably gonna get a match. So remarkably, I put that picture on Twitter a little while ago. It was pretty amazing. It showed like, I think it was during the Community Warfare event, but it showed like an even, you know, on a planet you'd see 48-48, 64-64, and matching amounts on both sides, and then you could see people queuing up. And players just find each other, and it works out quite well. And then there's the 10-minute wait time if there isn't an opposing team, and that allows teams to come out of combat and get it, get back in again before there's any kind of auto-win situation. So really, an auto-win or turret drop, whatever you'd like to call it, is happening maybe only 2% of the time, and is certainly not a factor in planet takeover. But the oversight is that, what we didn't realize, I guess, because the code tries to do even amounts of attack and counterattack. It basically says, okay, we did, you know, invasion last time, and attack, we're gonna do counterattack this time. But if you queue up as an attacker, and the matchmaker wants to do a counterattack because it did an attack last time, it only waits a few seconds if there isn't an opposing team sitting there waiting, and then it says, "Okay, there's no one here. We're gonna go into this 10-minute, you know, auto-win wait period, but we're also gonna flip it now to be an attack again since the attackers are sitting here waiting." So even though the clans had a 53% win rate during the event, they didn't get any planets. An atmosphere had like 50-some. And that was just, you can imagine, your faction takes over like seven squares, because you hit the queue with all your attacking groups, and you're getting nothing but attacks at first, of course, because there's no territories to counterattack. So you win some of those, 53% of them, so you have like four of those in your possession. And then the defenders, if they're jumping in the queue before then, you're gonna get nothing but counterattacks until, basically, all of your territory's gone again, because even at a 53% win rate, a majority win rate, you're eventually gonna lose them all. So it was a pretty big problem. That'll be fixed for the upcoming patch, and basically, the way it'll be fixed is that you're guaranteed to do a 50-50 fair shake at attack and counterattack. So even if you're the, as attacker, if you get to the queue first, and the matchmaker says, "No, we're gonna do a counterattack", you're gonna do a counterattack. So even if eventually, you know, 3-minute wait goes by and the defenders show up, the other team shows up, you're still doing the counterattack. And then even if, you know, 2% of the time you get like the auto-win type drop, it's still a counterattack. So you'll get an auto-win in the counterattack, which means you won't actually end up with another square, you won't always get, automatically get another territory if someone doesn't show up or in those situations. So it really just is, even though, you know, the complexity of it was more than it sounds to get the proper fix in, it means we're getting the proper guaranteed 50-50 split of the two game modes, and even taking in the 2% auto-win account to make sure that still stays the fair balance. So it's just gonna come down to win rate. If you have a 53% win rate throughout the day, you're gonna end up taking the planet, and it won't be about flooding the queue to get the game mode bias that you want. I'm just gonna say one other thing, just to make sure it's really clear, that flooding the queue, I know to a lot of people, they immediately thought auto-wins. Like I've shown you, that isn't the case. 2% of the time, the auto-wins were happening, and most of those were happening in the obscure hours of the day. So the auto-wins had nothing to do with planet flipping. Flooding the queue, that the opposition always, almost always, 98% of the time showed up in time to have, to make a match, you know, to have a competitive match with the other team. It's just that in flooding the queue, that biased the game mode. So that won't happen anymore. So that means that I felt like, if you take that into consideration, which is a pretty big thing, in consideration with the addition of VoIP, Faction Chat, Faction Groups, all the additions, Looking for Group, right, the improvements to the Q info and the Call to Arms fixes and changes, the addition of the Counterattack game mode, the other three maps, and a fourth one coming up very soon, which we can talk about a little later. I felt it was time, in particular that last one, because you saw the map go all the way down, well past Tukyad, and then just kind of get blown to bit smithereens during the event with the higher numbers, and then it's been fairly weird since then. So here's how we're gonna do it, though, and I think the people will hopefully find this fun and interesting. This is the plan that could change, based on technical issues, but we are going to have an event, not this weekend, but we're gonna patch on the 21st. If everything goes really well with the patch, then on Friday, the 24th, we're going to have our Battle of Tukyad event.
Yes.
Yeah, the Battle of Tukyad event is gonna be pretty cool, I think. It's, I guess we'll call it a beta version of our Battle of Tukyad event, our first big sort of, you know, canon event. So the only planet that's gonna be up for contention is Tukyad. And all the clans are gonna be able to attack it, and all the inter-spheres or players are gonna be able to defend it. And I should back up a little bit here and say, the one change that's coming in on April 21st patch is that we're changing the cooldown timer from 24 hours on contract breaking to 72 hours. That's three days. We've been wanting to do this for a while, because I think 24 hours is really quick flipping and flopping, but also, we want, the event is gonna run for exactly three days. So once this goes out on Tuesday, the 21st, you'll have up until Friday to, well, basically you have from this moment that I'm telling you, of course, up until Friday, the 24th at 10:00 AM, Pacific time, to make sure your faction's locked in. And then even if you break your contracts, it's gonna take 72 hours to break it, so, you know, if you have a fresh contract at the beginning, you're not gonna be able to switch during the battle. And that's the point, right? We want everyone to have a good, we want to announce it today, so everyone had a full week's notice to get all the shit straight and get arranged and aligned to the faction that you care about. Because you will want to fight for one faction the entire time, just to try and win. So I'm not gonna give you all the details now that Matt Newman, those guys do it, but there'll be 63 sections on the planet, so it's going up from 53, or sorry, from 15 to 63, which is right now the maximum amount that we can put on there and have it work. And so all the players will, on both sides, will queue up. So that means the planet, somebody do the math for me, who's got the calculator out. 63 times, what, 24? That means the planet can support 1,500 players on it, not counting maybe another few strike teams queued up. So anywhere between 15 and 1,700 players can be fighting on this one planet. And we had about that many during the last Community Warfare event, so everyone's gonna get on there. And then, of course, when it's all said and done, either the clans are gonna win or the inter-sphere is gonna win, but we're gonna go deeper than that and say, you know, who, for example, who was the top unit on the inter-sphere side? Who was the top unit on the clan side? Who's the top faction per side? Perhaps best players. They're working this out. There'll be some specific rewards, and I think even a unique cockpit item. There might even be a unique title for all the players that have participated in the first, I guess we'll call it, you can call it the first season, or the first phase, or whatever. We use the word "season" just to differentiate from the phases of the features that we're putting in. So what we want to do is, when the event is concluded on Monday at 10:00 AM, I guess that's the 27th, we're gonna immediately go into, actually, I think I'm saying that wrong. I think we're going until something like 3:00 PM, because we want to line it up with a battle window, flipping ceasefire period. So when that's concluded then, and we, you know, all the announced, all the winners are gonna be on the website, like an event-style page, and then we'll do a map reset. So that'll be the conclusion of this first season. We'll do a map reset, and then the new, this next season, of course, should be very, much more clean and tight and, you know, good right from the get-go, because you've got all that list of fixes and features that I mentioned a few minutes ago from the start now, including the game bias fix. So this next season, I think it'll be a lot more fair and legit, and there won't be a lot of planets with flipping unless there's player involvement and having a, you know, greater than 50% win rate. So that is, that's kind of the gist of the Battle of Tukyad, which leads into a reset of the map going into our second phase. So I think there'll be a small hotfix that Monday, and just a quick downtime. I think the faction screen is gonna switch from saying "beta", it'll say "beta 2", so we can kind of think of as we're officially going into, you know, Phase 2 of our beta of Community Warfare. I'll take a breather. Comments, questions on that?
Excellent. So, well, first of all, exciting Battle of Tukyad. For a lot of the lore heads, that's gonna be an awesome event. For everybody else who get to learn, I did post a little link in there from Sarna regarding Tukyad, if you wanna read up and figure out what that is all about. Now, you're saying Phase 2 of the beta. Could we, might we expect another wipe somewhere down the road? You think, like a reset, I mean?
Well, I think we'll probably have one more. It's not guaranteed if everything goes really well. I mean, the main reason we're having this reset, I think, is because the state of the map based on not having all the fixes and features that we've done over the last four months. So now that we have them, and there'll continue to be more fixes and features, of course, but if it's fairly smooth moving forward, maybe not. There might not be, but I think there's the potential for one more when we go to Steam for MechWar Online. At that point, with the influx of players and having another round of features and improvements is possible, that we'll have, decide to have one more. Yeah, and that kind of comes down to Community Warfare Phase 3, though, and, you know, win conditions. You know, like what are the win conditions? That's one thing that isn't really, you know, prevalent in the game right now. It's kind of player-defined win conditions, and so we're gonna be, of course, trying to further define those for the players, and then that will probably determine when something should be reset or not, right? So I can't answer that better than that at the moment. So I think players should expect the next season, at the very least, or the next, you know, this next map reset to be probably at least as long as the one we just finished, at the least.
Okay, follow-up for that, Russ. Obviously, we're getting questions in chat live. Because you guys are doing an event like this, where there's only one planet under contention, is this something we can expect more often?
Well, the answer's yes, except the Battle of Tukyad is, there's aspects of this that is, you know, fairly temporarily programmed, hacking, if you will. There's, it's not, it's a good beta example for us to do a test, and really sort of test that all of our fixes and game mode bias and all these things are solid and in place. But yeah, I think it's gonna give us a pretty good idea of exactly what functionality we need for events like this in the future. So my hope would be that by the next time the clans reach Tukyad, if they should, that we'll be much more ready for it, to do it, you know, at that time, you know, when they actually get there, rather than like it is this time. And that, you know, we'll have had time to create a few more features to support it much more easily. You know, like designers just to, just to turn it on and just, you know, through designer tools, do it, rather than the way we're doing it this time, which is a little more force-fed.
Alright, well, we're gonna go ahead and move on to our normal questions, unless you have more to cover with Community Warfare. Do you want to go and move on, or do you have any other info you want to get out there?
Well, I mean, the next question looks like it's about Community Warfare, so let's just ask it, and that'll, that should lead into, you know, kind of where we're going with Community Warfare.
Awesome. So first question up, we have Demon Athenee asks, "You mentioned 4v4 for smaller Community Warfare games. Any details you've hashed out yet on that?"
Yeah, let's go ahead and read the one from Ice Griffin as well, because I think, I think the answer to the first one kind of feeds into that.
Alright, and he has, "How would you grow the Community Warfare queue? How would you bring more players into the base?"
Okay, so, Community Warfare Phase 3, even though I won't put a date on it at this point, this isn't something imminent, you know, like next month or something. It's, it's probably at the soonest, late summer. So I think this is defined as I'll get right now. I would say our design is 90% complete for the 4v4 aspect, and we're still about, I don't know, maybe, my hope is that we're one to two more weeks in the, in the boardroom designing the, the other changes. I guess the more logistical changes around contracts, the relationship between lone wolf merc units and the loyalists, and the differences between the three, and all that aspect is being defined further. I hope before the 1st of May, we'll have a completed design and we can tech-review it, and then we should be able to start some of the work in May, would be my hope, and then quite heavily in June and July, and we'll go on to test, so that's about as, about as defined as I can get on it. We're certainly not gonna promise a release date, and I don't think anyone wants us to. We want us to obviously get it, get it right, and make sure that it is a significant improvement to Community Warfare. So 4v4 will be a part of it. They are scouting missions. The plan is to utilize, well, first, use whatever maps play the game mode best. So that, that definitely means including the public queue maps. It may or may not include all of them. I think we won't know that till we go and test it, and there's certainly a possibility that a few of them might not work well enough. So it might not include all of them, but it'll include at least some of them, and it'll be a 4v4 scouting mission. So the idea here is that players are gonna have to work for their invasion corridors more than they do today. Right now, the algorithm, of course, just automatically assigns you an invasion corridor for each border, bordering faction that you have. The idea in the future, and I'm gonna put out the disclaimer again, anything can change still, but right now, the plan would be that, day one, the algorithm would give you a scouting mission on each of your borders. And, you know, so assuming that the battle windows stay at 3-8 hour windows as it is now, at the end of the first eight hours, it will see if you successfully scouted a planet. Think of it in a very similar way, have to, you know, go over 50% mark, and successfully scout it by the, by the flip, by the ceasefire flip period. And if you did successfully scout it, then that particular planet will become an invasion corridor, and the algorithm will give you another scouting planet on that border. Now, it is possible, if you're a big enough faction with enough good units, that you can successfully scout each of your scout worlds and create invasion corridors on each border. So it will be up to you as players to, you'll have a little more choice than you do today. I mean, right now, of course, you still choose which border you're gonna invade on, so it's very similar in some ways, but you will have the ability to say, "We're going that way", so you scout the planets in that direction, successfully scout it. This is, of course, a new game mode. Won't go too much into that, but at the moment, we're thinking it's, well, yeah, those are a little bit loose, those details, but maybe lighter on the tonnage. And the idea here kind of slips into Ice Griffin's question, is that we hope this should involve more people in Community Warfare, because we know that Community Warfare can be fairly fun during the event for pugs, when there's lots of pugs jumping in there, but of course, when it's mostly 12-man units going up against pug units, that can get kind of tough. And a lot of solo players or small group type players may not play much Community Warfare right now outside of some of the bigger events. So this is an idea where you might be able to, and more players, pugs and solo players, can come into Community Warfare and participate in a new 4v4 mode, so they can say, "Well, okay, I can't get 12 players together, nor do I want to go up against 12-man units", but our small group of four that we run in group queue, or even just as solo players using the Looking for Group window, you can put together four guys fairly easy, you know, comparatively, and you can launch scout missions. And of course, the units can split up and do that as well, but that'll become a balance for them. You know, you wanna, you definitely want to make sure that your scouting corridors are getting scouted, so that you can get the invasion planets the direction you want, but you can't, you know, forget about your invasion planets, of course, or you won't win those. And so if you fail to invade but successfully scout, the invasion planet will, of course, go back to nothing, just being enemy territory, and the scout planet will turn into invasion corridor. So it does provide another game mode and another way for, again, solo players and smaller groups to get involved in Community Warfare. And there will be some changes to the Call to Arms functionality that should allow solo players, even those that are not aligned to a faction, so true lone wolves, to receive Call to Arms in some situations. So that should, some of these changes, we believe, should start to pull more public queue and group queue players, or if you want to call them "play now" players, into Community Warfare. And that's, I guess, a brief rundown of how the 4v4 scouting mode will work. On the game mode, it's, so your lance, your scout lance will be, let's just say, gathering some resources, battling an enemy lance, and it'll have the same notion, like there'll be an attack and defend aspects of that game mode. There'll also be the counterattack and counterattack defense aspects of that game mode, all the same situations that we have with invasion, so that it meets all the same criteria of Community Warfare, where a player can, so, you know, an opposing faction can push back and un-scout the planet, so to speak, so that, you know, you can prevent it from being fully scouted, so you can prevent the invasion window possibly from happening. So, yeah, that's the gist of, of the 4v4 aspect. So I'll just put out a reminder for Darren and Phil, let's just make sure a question. The other aspect of Phase 3, I'd like to go into at least a little bit, to give some people some more, I don't know, good vibes about Phase 3, is that there is, we're definitely putting a lot of thought and work into the lone wolf merc unit and loyalist definitions, and having kind of the three much more distinct definitions of players and player abilities. And so I'd like to go into that at some point tonight, and I can jump into it now, or we can see if there's, I'm sure there's some questions that'll feed into that.
There are. There's people that brought up that specific point, "What about us lone wolves and mercs?", so if you want to, you know, just segue into that right now, that'd be good.
Well, I mean, right now, let's face it, the game is pretty much, you know, as the namesake of the website, it's mwo mercs.com, so I mean, really, everyone's a merc, and that, that's kind of, you know, it's a good way to put the baseline functionality of the game of Community Warfare into play, so you can, as a merc, you really align yourself with one of the 10 factions, and away you go. But of course, that's, there's been, there's been a lot of talk about loyalists and the loyalist life, and, you know, why would I want to be a loyalist? And, and then we also kind of lost the lone wolf aspect in the midst of it as well. So I guess I'll just say, again, like I told you, we're still a couple weeks away in finalizing this, but the goal would be that, as a player, you can be a lone wolf. So of course, that's really like the solo mercenary, and you don't have any contracts, and those players would have the least rewards in, in, in the Community Warfare aspect. Perhaps not many at all. However, they'd have the most freedom to respond to contracts really on a one-off basis, essentially responding to, potentially responding to Call to Arms for, most anyone, for like a one-off situation. But really, their only rewards, of course, would be the in-match C-bills or something. But that, what's interesting about that is, even a pug player who has no faction, who's never aligned themselves to a faction, we might be able to open up the possibility of those players receiving Call to Arms in that very one-off fashion, to suck them into the queue, to use them to fill scouting missions, fill invasion matches, or just pull them into the Community Warfare environment, really on a, on a one-off type situation as, as a lone wolf, not aligned to any particular faction, essentially jumping in and helping houses everywhere. And then, of course, the next is the merc unit. So it's a collection of mercenaries in the form of a unit, and they'll function, they're probably the category that functions the most like the game does today. They won't have the freedom of the lone wolf. It's not a per-battle situation, of course. We can't afford to have our largest, most powerful merc units in the game fighting on both sides of a battle within the same hour. So there still will be the notion of a contract that you take on with one of- Fighting on both sides of a battle within the same hour. So there still will be the notion of a contract that you take on with one of the ten great factions. Um, and, but then there's some more depth involved there now, uh, but more defining of. I guess the, the part that you'll want to hear though is that you're not, if you take on a contract with Davian, you're not house Davian. You know, you won't have the house Davian insignia by whatever, that you're, you're a mercenary unit and you just happen to have a contract with Davian. Um, so you'll have more of an identity as a murky unit in that respect. Uh, the loyalists, of course, is going to go undergo a fair amount of change because. They'll now have some capabilities that is unique to being a loyalist. Of course, they're locked in. Um, beyond whatever contract breaking functionality we allow still, but they'll have. Uh, the most ability to earn the loyalty points, unlock the loyalty ranks of their faction. Uh, for unique loyalty type items. And of course, there will be some sort of. Um, loyalist unit contract system where um, we'd like them to be able to use their coffers to. Um. Incentivize merc units and um, lone wolf players to fight in particular areas or particular planets. Just to direct them, uh, say, look, if you fight here, you're going to get more. You're going to get more per player per drop, for instance, and those are the details being worked out. But. Uh, that I think um, will give a nice differentiating aspect. You can think of the lone wolf really as really the solo player. That just likes to play in solo queue, but now there's an interesting way for him to say, to respond to a call to arms to go off in a. In a one-off type situation to um, earn some money and some C bills and to participate in community warfare. The murky unit, um, again, it'll be very similar to us today, but to be more defined as a, as a mercenary rather than just kind of becoming. The house when they take on the contract. So that'll be nice. Uh, the loyalists having much more control and benefit for taking on the loyalist aspect. Um, of course, we're also going to help with the um, more leaderboard functionality. So when you have your unit tag next to a planet. Um, obviously we want to know who's the top loyalist unit, who's the top merc unit. Um, and then some ability to, if you have, say, your, your tag next to a planet. Um, we'd like there to be some way to spend your coffers on upgrading the defenses. Um, and that might come in several forms we're exploring, but one would be um, perhaps. Um, increasing the number of territories in the planet by a few sections to make it harder for an enemy unit to take over, for you to defend. And so that you can keep the unit tag because there'll be leaderboards and, and benefits for wanting to do that. So I would suggest that's, there's a lot of minutia and details within those categories I brought up. But if you want to take that in a nutshell and kind of, that's a summary of. Of really what phase three would be, and that's probably biting off about the, the amount of time we have and the amount of time we. And amount of work we want to, we want to bite off for the next, you know, phase of community warfare.
Very good. Phil, you got a follow up?
Yes. Well, speaking as far as community warfare and phase three, we actually have a question that sort of relates to that, and that's Gascusler, and he asks. Are there any bonuses for holding particular planets? And the reason this question gets brought up and we, we have a few others and it basically comes down to. What do we get as players and or factions or units for taking and holding planets? Is there any type of planet rewards or incentive right now for actually doing that? So obviously there isn't right now, but what are your guys' plans for phase three? Or does that involve phase three?
Well, it does a little, at least a little bit. I mean, just based on the, the unit tag being next to a planet. Um, having, actually having leaderboards and actually having, um, having it matter beyond just like the way it does now. Um, but if, if they're look, I, I, I don't believe that phase three will have like, hey, you know, you can buy autocannon fives now for. Ten percent off because you hold this particular planet. Um, nothing like that for. Phase three, but there will be benefits now for sure. Um, uh, for a unit to have, say, be top of the leaderboard for loyalist units and have their tag next to eleven planets or something. Um, much more benefit to the bragging rights just based on being leaderboards, but of course we'd like to try and, and also. Have some kind of reward for being number one on that list, or if you have more than ten, you know, is, there'll be something. Um, not, uh, you know, the minutia of, you know, saving five thousand C bills on a, on an A C five or something like that, though.
All right, then on to the next question from Brawler nineteen eighty-six. He says, why is the art quality from community warfare maps so different from regular drop maps? The, the solo group queue, I'm assuming. Are the community warfare maps going to be reviewed, art and gameplay quality wise? In the near future? Now, I'm not certain what he means by this question. Maybe you can interpret it better than I can, but.
Yeah, I don't really know for sure. I thought a lot of people kind of felt like the community warfare maps were. Um, you know, some of the best looking, perhaps even the nicest and best looking maps we have, but. This question almost makes it feel like he feels the opposite, that they're worse, and so we need to look at them and make them better. So.
So without knowing what he's getting at specifically, can you just comment on maps compared to the solo and group queue compared to community warfare queue? I don't know.
Well, I mean, not really. I mean, the community warfare maps are created very differently. Um, they're created for more specific to a game mode, right? I mean, community warfare maps are created for the invasion game mode and the, um, I think the scouting ones will be able to use the public queue and they'll be able to. Public queue maps primarily, and they'll be able to, be able to, to be made to work for that. Um, but the community warfare invasion maps in particular are made really to work with the invasion game mode. And they're also made to be created in a much more effective way, you know, to use the existing. Um, texture and palette sets that we have. And so, um, but the only thing I can say, kind of spin off of that question is to say that. Uh, now the public queue maps, like I mentioned briefly recently, that the river city is currently undergoing uh. Um, an update pass. And I wouldn't think of that as much about graphically like. You know, brand new buildings, brand new effects, brand new textures and shaders so much as looking at it and saying. Okay, this is kind of neat, this map was neat in the day, but it's, it was made back in the eight V eight days and it was kind of small even for that. Now it's really small. Um, we've learned a lot about how to make levels and we kind of feel like the, you know, the minimum, uh. The minimum, you know, map size should be at least as big as, I don't know, caustic valley or something. So. Uh, we're, we're looking at River City with all that in mind and looking, we're expanding and opening it up and making it. Uh, bigger with some new areas to explore and kind of containing the core of the old River City with some fixes and tweaks in the middle, but. Expanding it and growing it and making it just work a lot better for uh, um, you know, the game today.
Okay, um, you know, most of the feedback I get is less like what you said, the, the maps for community warfare look great. And uh, most people that I talk to think they look better than the earlier maps, which would make sense, experience in map building and so forth. Um, so a follow up on that would be, and this is something that I've been asked a ton of times. Is, are you going to convert any of the community warfare maps to solo or group queue since you have the assets and the palette and all this, and what you said there?
Yeah, I, I probably, I think that's very logical. It's just, it's going to find its way onto the uh. Priority list at some point. Like right now, top priority is, the top priority was to get more community warfare maps out, right? Because we only had two initially. Uh, we've got what, five right now? The H P G themed one is being worked on now. It's getting pretty close. I think it's scheduled for a May patch. I'm not sure which one. And then we had, um, we were going to make a swamp themed one, but. When it came time for the levels owner to start the swamp themed community warfare map, that's when I put them on pause and said, okay, well. We've got six, including H P G one. Let's take a pause now and go and work on the River City public map. We'll get the River City public map all updated and that'll, I hope will actually include, there's a couple of things we'd like to include. First off, we want to add. The drop ships to all the public maps, and that doesn't mean a drop ship mode with, you know, the form mechs and the drop decks. Um, it means just the initial drop off, uh, you know, spawn, it's going to be a much more cinematic experience of being dropped off by drop ships. And then of course, uh, we'd like to have, we have this whole new uh, time of day functionality that we're working on. So that means that River City Night, of course, which I know everyone loves. Um, will disappear and it would just be River City and then we'd have this, you know, time of day functionality. So. I don't know for sure the timing on the time of day functionality. We're still working on that, but getting the new River City map in. When that's done, then I'll take another assessment and say, okay, well, should we? Should we work on another public queue map, an older one like Forest Colony, you know, one of the originals and make it, you know, just give it the same treatment that uh, River City has? Or should we go back and make that seventh community warfare map at that point? Um, or should we look at taking, you know, I don't know, a grim particle or one of the, some of the community warfare maps and making them. Uh, public queue capable. So there's, there's no shortage of work to do and that's just as much insight as I can give you into my head when it comes to trying to prioritize. Um, on the fly, really what's, what I feel is going to provide the most, you know, bang for our buck and, and benefit to the players at that time.
Our next question we have is from, I don't know how to pronounce this. Uh, I'm just, so I'm just going to say Maury and he says, uh, are you going to revisit? Two initial community warfare maps and try to fix spawn camping uh, on defenders?
Yeah, spawn camping to me is a, is a fairly big problem. Um, that I do, we had a, a meeting about it recently and I wouldn't look at it just the two initial maps. I mean, even. I think the, the latest map, the forest one actually is potentially the worst in some ways for, um. Uh, what is that? Is that the Charlie drop point? One of those points where it can get overrun by the better team fairly easily and they can pretty much hold down that spawn. Um, for a long time. So it is a problem and we do have some ideas. The problem with, uh, it's, community warfare is such a complex thing and it's too bad we always have to design around. You know, the worst competitive sort of like griefing tactics possible, because if everyone just played the game as it was meant to be played, it would be so much easier to design a game, right? Uh, an example of that would be, um. You know, for instance, I, I, what, what idea, uh, maybe perhaps the strongest idea was. Uh, the defending, I think the uh, gorge one, what's it called again? And the, that was the working title. Um, help me out here.
I want to.
Come on, really?
We've been mispronouncing the.
Well, the gorge map was the, the, the working title, but it got named the uh.
Somebody in chat will get it.
You guys are killing me.
I know.
Someone, no, that's, that's, I'm calling you guys out in real time.
What? You, you're there. We're over here. I'm just saying.
Hellboy, thank you. Hellboy Springs. See, these guys know. Maybe I should, maybe I should, nevermind. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So there's, that one has the two kind of mirrored giant platforms where the, where the mechs get dropped off, right? So I suppose that's why the person said that the initial maps, because in some ways that's probably the best map we have as far as. Having a nice designated spawn area, including where the defenders spawn, kind of up and away from. Uh, the incoming paths and all that kind of stuff. But it is still possible, of course, to push up there and to spawn it. So the first idea would be, all the maps should have a similar uh, drop zone area for the defending team. Kind of up in a way, you know, pushed in behind, if you will, or whatever, from the main cannon and the old gens. Um, so that kind of gets them away from the action. So it's the, a spawn camping situation of the defenders would have to be. A much more deliberate act if they're really stomping you to get up on your platform. And then at that point, ideas like, uh. I'd like to see the drop ships come in potentially. It just, if there's a mech up on the platform, enemy mechs within the vicinity up on the platform, they'll literally just sit there and hover and just. Melt you with the twelve year large lasers as long as you're around. So, you know, don't go up there, basically. That's, you know, there's a couple of variations of something like that that could work that basically just, there's the defender spawn area up there. Don't go up there. The drop ships are just going to absolutely melt you. Um, and maybe we even change the drop ship so they focus fire everything on one mech. There's some things we can do. That make it pretty, pretty strong deterrent. Of course, the challenge then comes in the fact of when we get into the counter attack game mode. Will the defending team be able to utilize that? Um, you know, get a lead. Kill one of the mechs and then sit up in their drop zone and let their drop ships uh, come and. Say, well, the drops aren't going to come unless one of them die. So then you push up there and kill a few, then as soon as you kill a few, you better get the fuck off the platform again before the drop ships show up. So. It's, it's a challenging problem. Um, I can tell you, we've been thinking about it that I, I think the solution I just voiced is, is pretty good. I think. It would do a fairly good job, but there's just that outlier situations where like, well, geez, what if the players just do this? It's like, oh geez, why would they do that? Tell them not to do that. Um, so that's, we're thinking about it and uh. I don't know, it's timing that is, is, it's a more level work. It's, you know, it's going to be a few more changes and uh. We're working on it, but I don't hold your breath for now. Just be good little boys and girls and don't spawn camp each other. That's loser stuff. And we're going to, we're going to work on it, try to, try to improve that and our timing on that would be certainly before. You know, hopefully, um, by the phase three, um, release, you know, late summer at the earliest, uh, as I said, we could, we could have made some. Uh, some reasonable improvements to that situation.
Sounds good. The next question is from J Man Five, who incidentally wants a leaderboard that represents the best players whose names start with a J and N with a five. His question is, any plans to fix generator rushing in community warfare?
Well, that's another good question. Um, I think.
Do you feel that rushing is a tactic or do you think it's an issue?
Oh, boy. Um, huh, kind of depends on one's mood and how much they get pestered by it, right? Um, I could see, well, I was, I was playing during the event and I feel like calling out some people right now and just embarrassing them, but. We ran into one particular unit when I was playing as, I can't remember wolf or I was with the clan side, of course, inner sphere unit. Yeah, anyhow, I won't say who they are, but they were, they were rushing in. They were rushing in with that tactic and yes, it was beyond infuriating, you know, so I don't like it. Um, I'm sure there's people could say it's a tactic, but you know, it's very dependent on the mechs, isn't it? I mean, sure, the clans will have, um. Arctic cheetah coming up and whatever, but I don't like it. I don't think it's good, but it's another difficult problem to solve because. If you balance for a particular issue, and so if we make a few changes to counteract that, then we've also probably indirectly made it. A fair bit harder for a legit push to succeed, you know, if you, if you add more turrets with various capabilities to take out lights, then. Uh, the legit units also going to have to deal with those situations. If you increase the hit points on the old gens, you can give them each an extra hundred, so it takes. Those light mechs a lot longer sitting there buzzing around trying to kill those things. So it gives the defenders a lot more time and opportunity to destroy them. That could probably work fairly effectively. You, you know, add an extra, double the hit points in all the old gens and. They'd have a pretty hard, much harder time taking them out, um, without getting destroyed. But now. If you have a really legit close match between two evenly matched teams, um, you've just made it harder and you've just biased it more towards the defenders. So. There's lots of ideas. Um, there's lots of ideas we can do. The key is, and if you've got an idea that you're throwing out in chat and stuff, just make sure you think about. Um, how it would affect just kind of a normal, natural map, you know, or match, the way that we want it to be played. So, um, yeah, obviously, and here it is, you know what the, you know what the easiest fix is, not even just the easiest, and no one likes to hear this because. Well, some of you do, but a lot of you guys are sort of uh, um, despise this, this kind of thinking, but. You know, if we just, I wanted to go with tonnage with the drop ships. I was in favor of it and we did it. Um, if we had a combination of tonnage and also, you know, sort of a one, 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 one situation with the classes, that would make a pretty big difference, wouldn't it? I mean, you'd, you could bring one, you could bring one of those fast mechs and if you increase the old gen health even fifty each or whatever. Um, you could probably counteract that, that rush and it had to be, it would take a lot more skill and tactics to pull that off with your, with your light mechs than otherwise. Um, we could also make it so you have to open the gates. You can't just jump over them in order for the old gens to be vulnerable. So. I think there's lots of ideas. Um, I'm not working on the problem right now. Um, I don't run into that tactic too frequently in the game. I know what's out there and we'll probably see it during two kid, which is. Um, frustrating. Um, I'm not going to be able to do anything about that uh, for the event. I don't think. So I could maybe jack up the old gen health for the event if we. Um, if you guys think I should do that, um, I could probably do that for the Tuesday patch, just like uh. Jack up the old gen health, uh, maybe, uh, I don't know what, double the old gen health and then.
Well, Paul mentioned, Paul's actually in chat and he said something about capture points, although I think he was being uh. Well, Paul mentioned, Paul's actually in chat and he said something about capture points, although I think he was being, uh, at gunpoint, somebody making him say that to you. But yeah, that, that would maybe take map reconstruction or something, right?
Sorry, which, which thing?
Capture points in order to, uh, delay the rush, you know, like phases or whatever.
Yeah, uh, yeah, sure. It would, it would be a change. I can't remember now. We've had all these discussions over the month and there was a lot of, we felt there was a lot of downside to putting capture points, um, and kind of ruining the immersion of the game mode a fair bit. We thought too, having kind of, you know, capture points, but, um.
Well, hey, Paul said it, not me.
Yeah, I think, uh, I think there's, um, you know, Band-Aids can be frustrating. We need to do something a little more, but a little more substantial. But if we wanna keep the drop ships where they are, meaning no restrictions of, you know, one mech per weight class, um, then that means the fix is, um, you know, it's, it doesn't take longer and it's gonna take work and it's gonna take time and it's gonna take away time that we could otherwise be making Community Warfare Phase Three. And that's, I guess that's the big downside is we could take a month out of our schedule to really fix light rushes. And you say, well, our light rush is happening enough and are a big enough problem to take a month out of our schedule? Or would we be better served by doing a couple of other smaller tweaks in the time being? Um, taking the old gen health, perhaps doubling the old gen health. So the light rush is gonna have a much tougher time, getting it done. And maybe that will be, we've seen that before, you know, when it came to, uh, pop tarting and things and you know, sometimes you put in a small tweak like, okay, your legs take damage and, you know, a few things like that and a tactic just doesn't become, it's just not useful enough or viable enough. So it disappears. So I would hope that maybe we could do a couple of smaller tweaks, like increasing the health to the old gen so that you gotta kind of attrition your way with your homies, you know, to the old gen in order to take it out. Buzzing around as a big cluster, you know, of, of lights is gonna have a, it's gonna have a hard time taking it out. So maybe we can put in a couple of tweaks like that for, for now, maybe that'll buy us, um, a little more time before we have to sort of take a big timeout on it.
All right. Moving on to one of the next question. This is Ender Assassin asks about Community Warfare. Is there any plans to ever create a new game mode? Uh, or game modes that aren't just what's currently in there?
Well, I think I just mentioned the new scouting game mode, right?
Well, yes. What I'm, I'm talking about maybe on the bigger scale, um, obviously, you know, currently with, you know, attack, defend and counterattack and stuff. Is there any other ideas that you guys have, like defend the drop ship or any, you know, just stuff like that? Is there anything floating around or just ideas?
I, I would kind of direct them back into public queue then. I mean, I think for Community Warfare, we've, you know, we're working with that as fast as we can. And then we've got the new four V four game mode coming in for the scouting missions. And that's really what we've identified for Community Warfare. Um, we are talking actively about adding another game mode to the public queue. And that is something that I'd like to do soon, you know, as soon as possible, just so we can breathe, I think, uh, quite a bit of new life into the public queue. So um, there's like at least say a fourth game mode, um, in there and that would be, I guess the way I'd answer that, um, Community Warfare will have, you know, the new scouting mode. And then I'd like to get a fourth game mode into a public queue. But then the whole, um, game mode selection debate is gonna come up again because I would love to add a fourth game mode to, um, public queue, uh, perhaps a really cool mode where you, one side is defending a union class drop ship or something that they're waiting for it to power up. But I can't add another fourth bucket to, um, public queue. I think at that point something would have to give, like we'd have to, um, you know, remove the game mode selection.
Yes.
Or something, you know, like the vote system that we had in briefly that people didn't like. So that's, um, very touchy subject, but uh, you just can't add a fourth one and just say, I only want to play skirmish and, you know, and then, and then you then, then complaining in your next breath that you're, you know, the elo matching wasn't very good for you. Well, you know, we can't have both. It's just not healthy. I mean, if we have more game modes than, uh, you know, League of Legends for crying out loud and, and we have, you know, buckets or matchmaking buckets probably, and they have, you know, who knows how many more players, infinite amount more players. So, um, anyhow, yeah, that's, uh, that's a, that's how I'd answer that question, I guess.
Okay. I do have a follow-up and this will be our last, uh, question for Community Warfare, but it has to do with solo players and the small groups. Now you mentioned the four by four coming down the pipeline. Does, do you think that still solves the issue of, I mean, you said it, you said if you dropped in solo and, and you're going up against bigger groups and how, you know, it basically almost going up against a wall, uh, you know, not being able to win. And, you know, obviously it's a frustrating experience. And then plus you have possibly new players that are jumping in uh, solo and going up against bigger or more experienced. Is there anything that you, you know, you guys are planning on doing to, you know, do that? Because you guys rely on solo players to fill in the gaps and, but also with the four by four, it's gonna give them something else. But for the most part, why or should a solo or small groups play when they're going up against these bigger groups and losing? I, that's a question that keeps popping up over and over, uh, in the community.
Yeah, um, it's, it's not one that could be answered well. Um, that there, there, it just comes down to limitations again. I mean, there's just, it's not enough players to support an entire solo queue, group, solo queue, you know, group queue, um, all on the play now side. And then all the Community Warfare matchmaking on the invasion queue and everything, as well as having like a solo queue for Community Warfare, or even like an elo matching aspect on Community Warfare. We use the elo skill based stuff on the public side and we have the solo only queue on the public side. But on the, on the Community Warfare side, there's almost nothing we can do about that. I mean, the only thing possibly is that, you know, something I've thought about which may or may not even make it into phase three, um, cause we need to see how, uh, you know, the player base grows. If we go onto Steam and various things, that might open up more possibilities for us. But the only thing I've, I've thought about was maybe having sort of a one planet, you know, militia thing going on in Community Warfare. So let's say every phase, there's just, it'll flip back and forth between clan, inner sphere. So maybe for one phase, there's like one inner sphere planet that, you know, the clans are attacking. So that means like all the solo guys and the militia, so to speak, can you know, on the inner sphere side can defend it and the clan side can attack it. And then next battle when it's inner sphere attacking clans, but essentially the only people that can join this queue is just like solo players and like no unit either, like no group, no unit, just like can't even be in a unit, just like full on solo pugs, say, I don't know. It just is an idea and then they can fight over that planet. So it's less meaningful. It's not like you're a unit and you're, I don't even know if you'd take over the territory frankly, or if it would just be more about here, play here to experience the Community Warfare game modes as a solo queue. Um, but then we're taking those solo players, however many it is, um, out of the other queue, which we're using to fill up all the other matches. So, um, I just hope people understand that they can't have everything, you know, there has to be trade-offs. I've been speaking about that for years. There's game mode selectors, elo matching, solo queue, group queue, even the, you know, the notion that group queue supports all group sizes of, you know, two through 12 and uh, the, all those things add a lot of stress on matchmakers. So, um, sorry, I don't, I don't know. It's, it's tough to, to determine just how many, uh, you know, how many players, there's certainly a certain number of players that, um, they, they express frustration over, you know, the, the fact that they get stomped in Community Warfare. But they also tell me in no uncertain terms that they don't wanna join a unit, don't wanna play in groups and don't want to do any of that stuff. But they say, I don't wanna do any of that stuff, but make it work for me. So what that tells me is, okay, you're, you're basically just telling me to create a solo queue in Community Warfare, which I can't do unless I wanna blow up something else, you know? Um, we'll make all Community Warfare just pugs only.
All right. Well, as Phil mentioned, we are going to stop, uh, asking questions about Community Warfare. That doesn't mean there won't be any more, uh, you know, something could segue into a question or if Russ sticks around for some live questions at the end, you can get some in. But we are gonna move on to the next topic, which is quirks. And the first question is, uh, from Dukes, which his question ironically is instead of quirks, why don't you release different versions of weapons, like the different companies, medium, uh, different companies that do medium lasers that do more damage and heat, other has bigger range, you know, lore based type stuff. Don't know how to answer it. Cause you don't do in quirks.
It's interesting, but I think we all have to realize that this is kind of related to the like, hey, MechWarrior, you know, we love it. All of us just love it, love it, love it. And we think this is the best thing ever, you know, it's just the whole notion of MechWarrior and you know, MechLab and Madcats and all the different mechs and the way you can customize them and just the way the gameplay is, it's, it's been, we've all loved it since, you know, the first MechWarrior game and and, you know, all the other spinoffs and tabletop. And it's just something that all of us as fans love it, but we know that it is hardcore. It's a hardcore game. I mean, it's, it's just, we're not the only game, you know, complaining that these kids today, you know, just like simple, follow the glowing green arrow type games, right? You, you hear those kinds of complaints all the time with kind of older gamers, cause you know, hey, the games we grew up on, you know, sort of thing. It's much harder, but the truth is our game is, is a niche product. I mean, it always will be. It's just a complex product. Doesn't mean it can't grow. Doesn't mean we can't add players to our player base, maybe go on Steam and stuff, and I expect we will. But it'll still always be relatively niche compared to, you know, very simple, large scale products. So we're always gonna have a hard time, no matter how much work we put into tutorials and first time user experiences, et cetera. It's just a much more complex game. So that's gonna limit our, um, you know, player base and things like that. And I guess the reason I went into that, the relation is, you know, we're not exactly helping ourselves in some ways either. I mean, you know, if you look at the, you know, the complexity of MechLab, the upgrading and the modules and now the quirks. Um, we'll talk about MechLab here today to remind me, and that, that's gonna help a lot to bring a lot of this, the new MechLab, all this information onto players' eyes. But still, let's just say it's like the best MechLab that ever existed on earth. It's still a lot of information. And so now the quirk system. So now we're gonna add in the MechLab for you to look at, you know, three different types of medium lasers that all have intricacies based on their manufacturer and stuff. Um, a lot of us would get all, you know, excited about that because we love this stuff. We're nerds and um, but it certainly just adds another layer, right? Of, of complexity onto this already complex game. So yeah, there might come a time where we say that's a good idea because we say, hey, you know, we've got, you know, these hundred thousand players or whatever and, and this is us, you know, we all love it and it's us, us, you know, this hundred thousand and doesn't matter if we make it more complex because it's, it's us, right? And we, we all get it. And so we can keep playing it. Um, we might get to a point like that at some point. I, I think right now though, we're focused on, we can phase three down. We'll get, um, I'll, I'll just drop some things here and we can talk about it in more detail, but there is a new MechLab coming. There is a new tutorial coming. Uh, the tutorial is gonna be great. It's gonna really, I think tantalize people as it sort of, uh, will be bordering on sort of, uh, uh, letting you dream of what a PVE experience would be like for, um, and single player experience would be like for MechWarren nine, cause we're bringing in a lot of that feeling into it. So with the new tutorial and the new MechLab, um, Community Warfare Phase Three, um, there'll be some more, of course, map work, um, new mechs and we're obviously working our way towards, um, Steam release. And that'll be again, around the time of phase three, we'll just say. Uh, so it's a little ways out now. We wanna get all these other things done. And then we'll see, you know, on the other side of that, uh, we'll see, you know, we'll see what the, um, how that goes, you know, is it the same? Same player base essentially, or is it significantly bigger? Is it a little bit bigger? Um, and I'm sure that our priorities of what is best is gonna be screaming at us at that point, like it always is, and we'll just prioritize and move forward. But yeah, I, I did mention that there's, there's definitely, um, there's a lot more we wanna do. I'm sure there'll be a phase four and five. And like we've said, there's, there's never any final products. So there'll be further phases and deepening of Community Warfare. I'm sure there'll be continuing to evolve, even the public queue with more game modes and maps. And, um, the tournament functionality of MechWarren nine is still something we think is way underutilized. Uh, we'd like to make more work on our spectator tools and those things. And even leading into eventually an entire expansion might be for a Solaris type of, um, area where we have all the official tournaments and you could be the champion of Solaris. Um, obviously that's a no brainer. It's just a significant expansion for MechWarren that's still yet to be explored. And then of course, single player, and I'm not naming these things off in any particular order of how they're prioritized. Um, PVE slash single player experiences. So we have enough ideas and content to make, continue to develop this game for, um, years and years and years to come. And I don't even remember what the original question was, but that's a huge rant right there for you.
Basically it was an idea of, uh, you know, have you thought about changing quirks to, to, you know, manufactured type weapons and stuff like that? But let's go and move on to another question about quirks and uh, one of them is from Spiral Facing. He asks, uh, will there be more non-weapon based quirks introduced to help chassis out beyond just weapon quirks? Ie ammo per ton, sensor quirks, target retention quirks, et cetera.
Now, but to be clear, there are currently, right? I mean, there's armor and, 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 um, mobility.
Yeah, you said more and, and that's, um, yeah, I, I think it's necessary. Um, just today I was playing my, uh, gargoyle, um, prime and, uh, used all the stock Omnipod, I believe. I had the tool, uh, dual LB five X and two, um, SRM sixes. So as we know, it's not a lot of weaponry for an 80 ton mech, but it's fast and everything. I like it. Um, I like to run things mostly into weapon groups like that. I, I found it to be fairly fun and effective, yet totally ammo dependent. And there's just like no more room for more ammo. So I, I may have had two tons of each. I can't remember, but it wasn't a lot. And I thought, oh my goodness, this, there's nothing I can really do to increase my ammo, you know? And so yeah, that, that, that's, I think that was a sign for me that, um, we, we already know that no brainers or something like damel, um, especially for particular mechs in that situation, um, jump chat, you know, thrust and various things, especially for some of the more notable, notable jump chat mechs, like a Highlander or something. So yeah, there's a few more. Um, no one's working on brand new quirks at the moment. But we'll have to get Mr. Buckton on a, on a list as soon as we can manage.
All right. The next question is from Deacon. He says, will there be any more rebalancing of weapon quirks? I think you kind of addressed this in that there's something big as far as balancing coming, but yeah.
Yeah, um, uh, it's just a, it's a constant iteration process. Um, but I, I guess the answer is yes. So I don't, I don't think there's ever gonna be an end to the constant probably iterating on quirks and, and stuff. So that's, you know, adding new types of quirks. And, uh, you know, iterating on the ones that are currently there. And so, yeah, I'll answer it that way. And then there's, and, and, you know, there is a kind of a larger thing that we're considering, which is, um, you know, more of an extensive, um, overhaul of more of the skill tree, of the, of the mech skill tree. And I think that's not really a shocker comment to everybody. And the skill tree is one of the oldest aspects in the game now that is you know, underwhelming and, and not as robust as it certainly could be, or as, as specific as it should be when it comes to, to mechs. So absolutely, that's something that we're looking at. It's a pretty big undertaking, but that will allow, I think for another layer of, uh, you know, significant uh, differentiating of, of chassis, one from another, you know, and not just the, the quirks and the hard points. But now if you have a, you know, a skill tree mixed into that with, uh, uh, specific to it, to chassis, that would, that would help a ton. So we'll just leave that at now. That's in the early stages. Um, something we're hoping to start working on fairly soon though.
There were quite a few questions regarding, uh, revisiting specific mechs that people felt didn't get a fair pass or whatever on the quirks. Same thing can be applied to that, right? So I can remove those from the question doc.
Yeah, for sure. I think that's where, where the situation we're in right now. So we'll get Tina and the various people to, um, you know, continue making threads, asking for like, okay, you know, what's the three worst quirk mech in your opinion? And we'll gather that information and we'll, and we'll iterate on those. Um, it's, you know, generally I think we, most of the time I feel like. most of the time I feel like we agree with the general feedback of the community. Uh, we won't always, but a lot of times I feel like we do and we'll, you know, make those, those changes and iterate on those, you know, mechs that maybe, uh, you know, didn't, didn't hit the mark as well as others.
All right. Next question we have from Vincent five, and this is actually, I need to, to preface this, this is his opinion. Um, and one of those is what are your comments on the community calling for even more nerfing with clan technology? Now I have to preface this for the most part, and I've talked to a lot of people, even veteran and experienced players. Uh, it isn't clan technology necessarily, and there's only a handful, i.e. the timber wolf, the storm crow, hellbringer and dire wolf. So I think that's what he's alluding to because I, if you take a look at the other mechs, uh, some of them aren't as high performing. So, uh, what are your thoughts as far as the clan and IS balance right now?
Well, um, I, I'm actually, you know, really backed off on this subject right now. I think a month ago, I still was looking for, um, ways to, you know, look at evening out the power between clans and interosphere. But I'll, I'll admit like, uh, during the event, I switched over to the clan side and it was a really, it basically, it, I don't feel like we can judge the situation right now, especially when it comes to community warfare because of the game mode bias situation. You know, there was, it was just really hard to tell because the inner sphere was taking over tons of planets and doesn't necessarily mean that they were, um, you know, better. It's just that, um, they were flooding the queue and flooding the game mode bias. So I couldn't tell. So essentially I'm, I'm paused and at the moment I feel actually fairly good about that. Uh, about the balance situation when it comes to committee warfare. I mean, the, the win rate we had, that's a very difficult thing to look at. I mean, I know 53% win rate sounds very even, but of course there's a lot of things that can throw that off like a lot of the, you know, maybe better and stronger units switching over to the inner sphere side for various reasons. Um, and, and now they're over there influencing the win rate. So I think the, the idea is to let the April 21st patch come out, fix the game mode bias situation. And then I also, on April 7th, I patched in the drop deck stuff. So I have the ability to change that on the fly. I, I think, I guess I'll leave the inner sphere at the extra 10 tons they have right now. Um, after the map reset and we'll see how it goes and during the event. Um, but yeah, no, there's no doubt that a couple of the mechs are really powerful, but overall, um, I'm not looking for ways to nerf the clans right now, I guess is the best way to put it. I, I actually, I'm hoping that things are pretty close, but I won't be able to judge it again until, uh, we'll have the two key event, we'll hand out our prizes and, and we'll have, have our map reset with all these bug fixes and changes and improvements, and we'll see how things go. And at that point, we'll, I think we'll be able to judge it again and see, um, see if it's close or not.
All right. Uh, the next question is from Rebus Crad. He says, will you please, please give us, well, actually we're moving to a new, uh, topic. So I should say that as well. We're going to talk about steam and maybe the new player experience, uh, some questions along those lines. So Rebus asks, will you please give us a projected month quarter for your steam release? I'm getting a little worried that you're going to spring it on us prematurely without warning Allah the clans or transverse.
Well, I fail to see how spring it on him prematurely is going to, uh, I don't know, affect him, but, uh, no, I won't give you a, a month or quarter. I've told you, um, I've already said late summer a couple of times. You can take that for, you know, what you will.
Late summer works. Phil, you want to take the next one?
All right. We have, uh, Maury Quinn D, I think is 86. After going, yeah, Maury. After going to steam, will we still have an option to purchase MC packs and stuff directly from PGI? Uh, he says, I'm worried about is that steam uses conversion rates in which $1 equals one euro for someone like me living in central Europe and not earning in euro, that would mean 20% increase in price without increased value comparing to purchase done with US dollar.
Uh, yeah, I'm not really familiar with steam conversions, um, that much, but I, I'll say this, I mean, the answer is yes, you can. And in fact, I would encourage you to do so, and it wouldn't surprise you that I would do that because, you know, the relationship with steam is such that they have reach to players that we can't possibly touch, right? And that's what steam's about. That's what they bring. They, they have an immense reach of players. And that's why you agree when they go on there to give them 30% of the revenue that's generated on steam. It's a significant, significant amount of money. But it's 30% of the revenue that's generated on steam. So the sales that happen within steam on the steam wallet, et cetera. And you will be able to buy MC through steam and a few of the packages would be there on this, you know, steam store and whatnot. But for our existing players, um, we would actually hope and encourage you to visit the website and purchase your MC that you, purchase on our website and, you know, the packages on our website, because that revenue does stay at our existing, you know, ratios of profit ratio and whatnot. It's not, we don't have to give 30% of steam. So, um, uh, that's, that's the relationship we have with steam. That's the way they do it. That's, they're fine with that. They're saying, you know, basically, because it kind of goes both ways, right? It's like some of our existing players are going to, for the sake of convenience, start purchasing their MC and a bunch of stuff on steam. So someone that we used to not give any money to steam, you know, this 30%, now we're going to give 30% of an existing customer's money to steam. But the flip side is hopefully there's also a lot of new players that come to our game from steam and also in turn decide to explore our product further and actually venture outside of steam and go to our website and explore all the content there and potentially even buy packages and/or steam or MC on our website, which we don't share. So it kind of, it's a two-way street, but yeah, certainly for our existing customers, I would say, um, please, please continue to visit our site directly, uh, for your purchases. That would be wonderful.
Excellent. Okay. The next question is from Annika who asks, when will we see some improvements to clan ultra, uh, autocannons? Either an increase in velocity or decrease in shell count or a combination of the two. And this is actually something that was uh, addressed by quite a few people who clan ACs.
Yeah, I'd like to do something there. Um, it, it's a tough one because here we are trying to determine like, okay, are things balanced well? Are they, are clan and, uh, you know, IS in a, in a good spot? And you're sitting here trying to make that judgment or waiting for the right time after the 21st patch, the new game mode bias thing, you know, battle two kid to judge it. Yet you know, if you make this change, even though you know you should, because the autocannons, I don't believe are just used frequently enough on the clan side. I'd love to see a few more autocannons instead of laser vomit. I think we all would. Um, but at the same time, I know any improvement to them at all is going to increase clan power at least a little bit. Potentially anyhow, it's hard to say, right? If you're trading off lasers for some ACs, I don't know. It's so, it's, it's a wild card you throw in. So Paul and I are in agreement though, that we need to do at least something. I think the safest thing to do at the gate would be, um, perhaps the velocities stay the same out the gate, but we reduce the amount of time between the shells. So the same amount of shells that they currently shoot each one, you know, AC two shoots two, so on, so on, down to the AC five or, or 20, which shoots five, I believe, right? So, but perhaps there's less, so the same velocity and same number of shells, but less spacing between the shells. So we'll probably be very iterative, iterative and very careful with this. We'll do a small change like that. Hope helps a little bit and, uh, you know, take it very slow, very carefully. Um, we won't go in there and just be like jack up the speed and lower the amount of shells and just, uh, we'll be careful, but we, we want to do something pretty quickly with that.
All right. Next question we have is from hyper 99 and he asked, uh, like what you've been doing with community warfare? My questions surround Solaris and solo players. Like to know if you could give us a very rough estimate of Solaris.
Paul's in chat, by the way, just saying.
Yeah. Solaris, we talked about it again today. Like I mentioned here briefly, it's a significant feature. I mean, honestly, it might be close to the size of feature that community warfare was for us. I mean, it's a big undertaking. I think we can reuse a lot. Um, I think it'll take specific maps. We can probably use some of them, but you know, I doubt you're going to launch a one V one, of course, on terminal line desert or something. So it's, we don't have an arena style map. There's just probably would take some map work. You could reuse the, the map, the inner sphere to kind of maybe go find Solaris or something and, and kind of launch into that environment there. But then, uh, a lot more tournament and competitive bracketing and various things are all going to be new. Uh, so I think, and then, you know, just to show the rankings and where players are in those rankings and arrange things in the game client. It's, um, it's a fairly big undertaking. So I would expect that it would be, um, I don't know. Top of my head is probably a six month feature for us when we can focus on it. So it, it's, it'll be, I'd be shocked if it was 2015. I'll put it to you that way. It's, it's a big feature. And we have to get phase three out first and, you know, get our steam launch out and then, you know, then we'll reassess. Is the top part of that phase four, is it? PVE missions? Is it Solaris? Everything's screaming for our attention, but that's about as good as I can do at the moment.
All right. We've got another question from spiral face. He asks, can, uh, can we look forward to non-community warfare game improvements coming down the pipe beyond the retooled smaller maps? Recent Twitter about River City.
Well, new game mode. I mentioned, I'd like to add at least a fourth game mode into the public queue, and I'd like to do that fairly quickly. That one shouldn't take us too long. I'd like to see if we can get it done during the summer, uh, add a fourth game mode into the, you know, existing public queue. That on top of tweaking some of the maps, like you said, um, I think would be, uh, you know, I think that's a pretty big thing right there. I mean, of course, you know, let's not forget we've, you know, some of the stuff we have added did, did apply to public queue as well, whether it's VoIP or, um, look for group tool. So we've had those improvements plus, uh, yeah, I'd like to get a new game out and that's the biggest thing. I guess one other thing is I think it does make sense. I've talked to the guys, we would like to do, we do want to do something a little bit different with elo. Uh, yeah, we'd like to have, I, I think we'd like to have the two elo scores, one for group queue, one for solo. At least go that far. And I'd like to change, we'd like to change the way it increases and decreases at least slightly. So it's not just about the win and on the loss, but, um, it's more about match score. So, uh, perhaps even in a, in a really high match score and a loss would potentially, uh, make you go up or maybe at worst case stay the same rather than go down. And a little more match score mixed, mixed in it makes a lot of sense. I've wanted to do that since the beginning, but, uh, it'd be nice to do that. So those two weeks on elo was something you could maybe look forward to. And there was one other thing I thought of actually is, um, oh, shoot, hope I could set my mind. I was going to mention it after, uh, the elo. Shoot, sorry, it's gone now.
Maybe it'll come back.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. So can I ask, uh, for someone who may not know, why is having a separate elo for solo and group queue? Why do you think that's, uh, that's something that you guys want to do?
Well, um, yeah, it's just, yeah, it's, it's, um, it's a debatable thing because really I think it's, it's really there to help keep the, uh, um, you know, the better players, I guess, from being frustrated in solo queue. Or, or making sure that they're not, you know, just, um, pulling up the average of, uh, you know, a lot of lower, um, elo people. And this, this conversation go right back to like, um, you know, game mode, all the like game mode selection, you know, being able to choose your game mode and all those things that narrow the buckets. Cause the narrow, more narrow the bucket is, uh, you've got 11 or, you know, 11, 22 players, 11 per side that have an elo of a thousand that all say they will only play skirmish, right? And then you've got, um, well, let's say the one side already has an elo of 2,000 and anyhow the other side, you've got to throw some 2,800 elo guy in there to pull up the average because everyone said they'd only play a particular game mode or whatever. So I guess what it comes down to also maybe a little bit more so is that players are, playing in a group makes players, I think, obviously it skews the elo. I mean, it, there's no doubt about it. I mean, there's some players in their game that if they played nothing but solo queue since the beginning, let's say they'd be, you know, I don't know, a little better than average elo score, like 14, 1500 or something. But they play in group queue non-stop all the time with a lot of really great players and they play their role within that group extremely well. So they end up with a 2,800 elo. Like maxed out elo, right? But they jump into a solo game and they have this 2,800 elo, which really in a solo environment, when they're on their own, should be like a 1,400 elo, but they're pulling up the average of their group as though they're like going to carry everybody. And it doesn't work out. So it's kind of a complex problem. It kind of, I see it as helping those high elo players when they step into solo queue. Um, or at least that way, if, when they play solo queue, they'll earn whatever elo they deserve in a solo environment. And then they'll earn, you know, a different one in the group queue and they won't pull up the other one. So that's, that's the idea and it should, it should help a little bit. I'm not sure. I, I actually debate if we should, um, potentially, if we did something like that, like if we changed, if we came up with the two elos and, um, maybe change slightly how the elo goes up and down. Maybe at that point we could do sort of a wipe of elo and kind of let everyone reestablish, uh, but that's not, that, that might happen. Um, I did think of the other thing again, it was the around, you remember how we went through rewards 2.0 a little while ago? I think added quite a bit of freshness and to the, the reward system. I do have another phase of that in a design, just waiting for some time. So I think that could breathe a little more life into, you know, not just public queue, but in general, that, that would be, um, there's more one-off rewards, like, you know, best tank and, and the match, et cetera. Like who took the most damage and lived and things like that. And there's, there's some more one-off, kind of like only one person wins it within the match. And I think some, some, some nice items that would also help, uh, help, uh, breathe some more life into the reward system. And it'll probably means a little more C bill rewards too. So, it's a way for us to potentially increase players' rewards. But not just through jacking up the existing things, but adding additional ones.
All right, Russ, you ready for a quick, uh, five minute break? We've been going about an hour and a half.
Yeah, sure.
All right, guys. Phil, you want to take us out?
Yeah, we'll, we'll be right back. Guys, again, my name is Phil. This is Darren and we're doing the town hall with Rust Belloc, president of Prana Games. We're going to take a quick five minute bio break, going to be showing you some all systems nominal while you guys, uh, wait for this. So go refill your drinks, grab something to eat. And of course, this is some all systems nominal animated action. We'll be right back, guys, in five minutes.
We'll be right back.
All right, guys, and we are back. Um, we're sitting here with Russ and we're gonna go ahead and continue on with the questions where we left off. So, uh, speaking of which, let's go dive into the first question. Russ, we have from Red Eagle eighty-six and Clan Ghost Bear International. Uh, they would love to know whether PGI is ever planning on fixing the Clan Excel, uh, engine by removing the silly heat penalty and introducing movement speed penalty instead.
I wonder what he thinks.
I know, right?
Yeah, um. I don't know. Um, I will say that the, uh. The heat penalty probably didn't have much impact. I think we all knew that kind of when it was going in, but we were trying to be. Trying to be mild with the, um. Nerf edge, um, wanted to see how that would play out. If you've lost the torso and some mechs in certain situations, if you lose the right torso, you know, a torso that didn't really. Contain your weapons or the majority of your energy weapons, um, it might be having an impact a little more so than, um, than you think. Uh, but whether or not we find that to be sufficient, um. I, I, there's no. There's no decision that will go to a movement speed penalty. Um. I think probably the proper solution is to. But then again, this, I was gonna say, if you want to have movement speed penalties, it probably should come from being hot and loss of a side torso. Which creates your mech to run hotter will cause to lose movement, but you know, that goes into another area of just creating, um. More complexity on an already complex game. So, yeah, right now I don't have, uh, a better answer than that. Um, I find it interesting that you're asking. Doesn't it say CGBI? Isn't that Clan Ghost Bear International? So.
Yeah, Red Eagle.
They would rather, so they would rather have a movement, a claner would rather have a movement speed penalty? That's the first. I've heard a claner suggest that. That doesn't sound right.
Well, that, the Red Eagle and several CGBI members put some questions together. That's why it says it like that. But anyway, yeah.
And speaking of which, obviously this was a topic of discussion recently. Um, you know, I think there was a few, you know, Twitter, uh, mentions of this. That's why it got brought up and, uh. Obviously the first attempt was to put that heat, you know, obviously you lose X amount for losing left, right torso, but. Uh, you know, does it ultimately solve the, the balance issue? So.
Okay, see, I'm sorry, my headset cut out there for a second. Um, yeah, no, I just, I found it interesting that, I mean. I don't know, CGBI is obviously a clan and they, I, I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong, the clan players do not, um. Uh, wish to have a movement speed penalty instead of the heat penalty, do they? Uh, cause if they do, that's certainly a sign that they feel the extra heat when the torso is lost.
Um, I think it's more or less, you can't generalize it as far as like all the clan players, just obviously that's his opinion and or a few people's. So. Um, yes, I, I think a lot of people just want a little bit more of, of what is there. Obviously the heat is a step. I think if it was in conjunction also with stuff like torso twist, excel, DXL turn rate and stuff, obviously. That would hamper, um, what mechs are we talking mainly? We're talking about the Timber Wolf, Storm Crow again, and a few others. That's really the. The mechs that can keep going even with a left torso, right torso blown off.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we could make it so, you know, there's, there's two critical slots in the clanners, right? In the side torsos. So, you know, having two critical hits, um, causes certain slowdown, but then we'd have to introduce that, uh, even on the inner sphere side, I guess, on the. You know, one of the side torsos, even if it's not completely destroyed, but have the capability of receiving critical hits. So. If you have two critical hits on torso, then you'd also be moving slower, but then it's, it's joint nerf edge. So it certainly wouldn't, um. Help bridge the gap if indeed we feel there's a gap, um, you know, come when we, when we reassess that again, but.
The one problem with that thinking, uh, is that the Clan Excel's have the survivability, losing a side torso. You can't do that with the IS and then of course the tonnage. Uh, differences as well. So, you know, it's just one of those things where I think. It, it still needs to be tinkered with, but, uh, a lot of people, there, I, I guess if you just look at chat, there's both sides of the coin. So. It's just a few people's.
That's unusual.
Yeah, right. So.
All right. The next question is from Imperius. He asked, basically this is just about high-end user support, things like 4K textures and so forth. Anything? Planned like that? Actually, in this 4K textures and, uh, the next version of Windows was brought up and.
Yeah, I know Imperius, he's, uh. He's always had a rocking machine and is looking to use it. I understand that. There's some frustration probably from high-end PC users because, uh. You know. Most of the time we're, you know, doing whatever we can to increase the frame rate for. Players that are more on the cusp, you know, that are. Not necessarily minimum spec machines, but more. Human, uh, sort of, uh, middle of the road and, you know, could use some more frames. And we've made a lot of progress on that in recent months and so. Um, it would be nice to spend a little bit of time. Um, creating some high level content that, you know, was only, you know, client-side type stuff. Um, I don't know, I need to ask actually, um, about 4K textures. I know we have a 4K monitor in the studio and I've seen our game running on it and it looks awesome. So. I guess that's just the same textures, but, uh. Um, you know, it's just a super high resolution, so it still just looks really good. But, you know, not necessarily, um, higher source textures, obviously. It would be a massive pack, so it would be. Um, only for your, you know, personal enjoyment on your client, of course. So, sorry Imperius, it's a crappy answer for you. I know you want some high-end stuff. Um. Yeah, I'm sorry. I mean, I can't give you a better answer. I want to be honest with you. I think in between here and Steam, it would be. Making sure that when we tap into all those players on Steam, we want to give as many as possible a chance at. Um, getting hooked on our game and that means making sure our game, uh, runs, uh, really well. Although I will say this, I think it's. We think it's time to probably adjust our minimum spec. Minimum spec was probably bullshit to begin with, like most games, but yeah, well, we have one of those, it, it runs. Um, but. We'd like to adjust it at least slightly. I think it's time. It's been, what, at least three years, probably since we set those and. Um, yes, we're no longer going to support the Voodoo two. Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna jump up. You know, I think we'll probably up them a little bit, but. Our focus between here and there will probably still be just making sure that the game runs on as many. Runs well and looks well and as, as many PCs as possible. And then. And then we can probably, we're gonna have to, you know, spend some time on some of these things, you know, like some of these things coming out. Are those direct X12 and stuff like that? Um, the interesting thing is we can't really take any more Crytek engine drops because apparently their next engine drop removes direct X9 functionality and I just don't. I don't know that we're ready to do that. So we might have to, um, integrate DX12 and some of these things on our own. So. Uh, that'll, that'll be different than, you know, taking engine drops or something.
All right, next question we have is from Gas Guzzler and this is sort of one of those that goes back and forth. Any jump jet changes that coming? Love to see the hover jets go away.
Hover jets, um. Help me out here.
Uh, it's basically the idea that, uh, the Highlander when the, uh, the class fixed to the jump jet basically nerfed it. Uh, it's no longer able to jump jet very high, even though it for three V three, as far as jump jets, it actually does go higher than the Dire Wolf. Uh, but it just, the tonnage to use and ratio, ratio out of there, um, basically. It's no longer there.
Yeah, um, I agree. Uh, we did a, we did a boost to the thrust a few months back. It probably didn't go as far as a lot of people would like. I think we're just super, super gun shy. We don't want to see the return of. The frickin' jump sniping meta.
Pop tarding, yes.
Yeah, the pop tarding. I don't think, I think the leg damage thing is playing a part there too, preventing it. Plus we may change the PPCs and other things. So. I think I'm willing to try another boost. I think we'd be careful. I think, I think. Some of the classes, I have some lights that feel extremely obviously mobile and I even have some mediums that, um. I don't know, was it my enforcer or a few mechs recently I thought were quite nimble on my jump jets? Um. Heavies is probably the class we're the most scared of because that's the pop tarding gods, uh, in a lot of ways, some of them. Um. But I think I'm willing to take another look at especially. You know, maybe the assault class. I think a lot of our thinking too was. Let's wait for, um. A thrust quirk, kind of help it that way, but I don't think that's quite right. I think that we're not quite. At a, at a proper base level when it comes to say, let's talk about assaults in particular. I would agree that the Highlander is, um. Probably a little bit. Uh, little bit low on, on its thrust capabilities. So that's a particular mech as an example. So maybe we could give it another small. Um, boost on perhaps assaults, maybe heavies and then, um. And then, uh, you know, after that, we can use the, the quirk to kind of boost particular mechs that we think need it. So. Uh, I don't know when I'll get a chance to work on that, but, uh, we're, I, I agree that, um, at least some. And I'm reading chat here a little bit. I agree. There are some, some kind of exceptions, like I have some quick draws that really jump and I have a. And my grasshoppers feel really nice, uh, for whatever reason, jumping. So, um, we have to be kind of selective. That's quirks would allow us to be more selective, but I think. I think assaults, um, could use a little boost. I'm not sure there's any at the moment. Um, Victor's Highlander, just tell me where you disagree, you know, that, uh, are kind of like. Jumping awesome right now. They're probably all feeling just a little bit underpowered. Thoughts, Phil, Darren?
Um, there was actually, uh, to, to bring this up, there was a discussion, um, not too long ago, um, about, uh, gravity, uh, uh. A member in the community Trev brought up the, the figures in the internal gravity in the game, what it set out. And obviously the scaling and stuff like that. I do believe in, um, there was a Twitch stream. Uh, by Paul, uh, like a week or two ago, it was posted up on Reddit that, you know, they were talking about it and saying the gravity of in-game was off ergo. That's why. Some of the jump jet effects. Have you guys looked into that?
Uh, I don't know about gravity. Gravity I think is related to too many other things though, like just the fact that the rag dolls when a mech. Dies and falls down and things is all affected by gravity. So if you change some. Gravity for jump jets, you're gonna create probably a million other bugs and various things that behave poorly. So it might come down to, I'll get together with Paul again and talk about it. It might be more about, um. Uh, not so much changing the thrust. And I'm not sure if we'll change the thrust like per jump jet, but let's say I go to class one jump jets with the assaults and then. Changing how much it grows with each successive jump ship, because I think the problem is not so much. How high and, you know, stuff they jump, it's, we don't want the one jump jet. Mech, you know, the one jump jet Highlander, the one jump jet catafact 3D. Getting the jumps like they used to. So I think you need, if you have a Highlander though, and you've invested. You know, four tons, six tons, you know, have like four or six, however many of those mechs hold, that's when that sucker should. You know, get further off the ground than it is currently. Um, the one jump jet mech, if you choose to take one, I think that's like. For minor convenience of jumping over some rubble and bits and pieces. I don't want those guys popping up and. You know, seeing over large walls. I think you need to invest. If, if you're investing in successive jump jets and you get four tons plus, then yeah, I think you should get. More benefit, especially on a mech like the Highlander that they do currently.
Um, another thing that was brought up into chat I saw was, uh. With jump jets and obviously the mechanic and it's been gone through a few iterations, you guys did change. Is of course a struggle. Why would I take five jump jets if I'm capable of it, but why should I dedicate that five tons? So. Um, you know, what are your thoughts on the current jump mechanic in general?
Well, I think I just, I don't know if I'd say anything different than I just said. I just, I think the reason you'd take five jump jets is because you can. Just have a lot more thrust and velocity and, and maneuverability than you currently have. I mean, if a Highlander can jump up. One of the canyons and canyon networks really lickety-split, you know, like quick and, and fast because they've got the full three tons of jump jets on, then. That's the benefit, you know, it's gonna save you. Minutes of, of walking around to, you know, another spot where you can walk up or, you know, jump up a smaller ledge or something. So. Um, that's all I can say about that right now. I'm not gonna answer that with like, well, you're right, you should be able to pop tart like a madman. I just, I won't go there.
Yeah, it's a divisive topic. There, obviously there's the lore-based people that say jump jets were only for maneuverability and then there's people that just like to pop tart and. Everybody in between. So what are you gonna do? The next question is from Raka. He wants to know, can you reveal to us what your plans are for mask? And there's. A lot of questions about masks, so Raka gets the credit, but just, uh, there's people that want to know the exact specifics and there's people that want to know just any little bit that you'll tell them.
Yeah, um, yeah, I'm sorry. I should have come prepared to this town hall with the like. Design in hand. Uh, I mean, I can't say that we have a design. It's, um, been through tech review. It's been, uh, approved by the engineers and. Um. Let me see, what was I gonna say then? And it's being engineered right now. So it looks like it's gonna work out. Um, I'm trying to see if I can, what details I can remember. Um. There will be some HUD indicators for, um, so first off in mech lab, it's gonna be like, like jump jets. So meaning. It's not gonna be in every mech thing. I think everyone anticipated that. It'll be certain mechs, just like we flag certain mechs with the capability to be. To have, uh, jump jets, that certain mechs will have the capability to equip mask and then you'll put the equipment on. Like you do, say, uh, you know, a, a jump jet, you know, so it's, it's there. Pop it on for those that are capable of it, but it's not a specific hard point, you know, like an ECM is. It's put it anywhere like BAP. But only for mechs that are flagged for it. It's like jump jets again. So jump jets is a good example. And, um, there will be some HUD indicator. And it will be, you know, a button, a way you go, run, you know, engage your mask. And it will be, you know, a button, where you go, run, you know, engage your mask. Um, this part would be hard to define. It'll be, you know, basically just, I think generally just a big boost to your mobility and, and, and your acceleration and, and speed. And so it'll, it'll fill that bar up and you know, it'll cool down much like a heat bar or something. And basically if you um, I guess if you overheat, so to speak, air quotes, like you use it too much, um, you will start to take internal damage on your legs. So it'll be very much like um, very much like when you overheat and you know, your internals are taking damage. So there will be some sort of pulsing damage happening on your legs when you're abusing, you know, the mask system or using it too much. So that's the gist of it. And it's gonna come out with uh, obviously we have two mechs in Clan Wave 3. Um, what Executioner and the Arctic Cheetah, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, they're, they're um, top speed, I think we've identified, but I don't have that memorized. I think the Arctic Cheetah is gonna be okay. I wanna say shit, I can't remember if it was in the 170s or if it went a little higher than that, but um, yeah, we think we're gonna be okay with, with these, with these mechs. And I think, you know, we might have problems if we want to uh, uh, you know, put one in like the flea or something that's gonna go uh,
Oh, the Shadow Cat has it too.
Is it, is it, is it three of them?
Shadow Cat, Executioner, yes.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Alright, sorry, those two. Apologies. Um, so yeah, those two in particular, I think, I'm not sure. I'm just again, sorry, I don't have all this memorized, but I think the Shadow Cat with its mask, I don't know that it actually goes over like a Locust 170. So I think that's kind of why we're kind of staying generally within um, the realms of our current top speeds. So you, you know, it might still be concerned in the future if, if a part, couple particular mechs that you know, blast beyond the 170 range, then we might have to think about that a little bit. But you know, staying under that 170 range or near enough to that will be, uh, it's gonna be okay. So yeah, I think it's gonna work out. I think it's um, I think it's, the design is, is the right one for, for our game. And I think it'll fit in with the other systems and um, the benefit of it, uh, we'll see, you know, it's gonna take some bouncing from us to just how much it should, you know, how quick it should accelerate you and, and the various things and benefits that you get. So it's not too overpowered, but um, is worth the, you know, the weight and whatnot and the trade offs.
Our next question we have is from JT SR and he says, any update to the rival of unit selected created decals?
Decals. Decals, yeah, decals decals are oh my goodness, they're, this is like one of the most frustrating things for me because essentially all the work is done, like the guys have done all the programming in the backend. We have like a little bit of work to do in the front end. And the, you know, the artists need to create a few decals. But if we were to focus on it, I imagine in, you know, in, in a month, inside of a month, we could probably, we could probably release, you know, uh, the decal system. But it, it just, it wasn't getting the time. The priority went to Mech Lab. So that's it. That's the bottom line. Mech Lab is in test right now. We hope to do a public test next week, but that's not a lock. Um, if there's too many bugs, we'll push it by a week. Um, we're hoping to release Mech Lab in the second patch in May, so that'd be May 19th. But yet again, if it's not quite ready, we'll wait. I mean, one extra patch is nothing, you know, to make sure that it's good to go. So I, I, I want to talk about that for a second. The Mech Lab, I think it's gonna be awesome. And so it's definitely, I've played around with it. It's it's definitely, you can consider it the full quote unquote um, Smurfy functionality. I think it's really cool because you got the full spread out Smurfy view, but we have to always keep low um, low resolution people in mind, which is really frustrating. Um, everybody, please get a new monitor, okay? We gotta stop supporting these ancient resolutions. Um, but anyhow, the bottom line is if there's a, there's a collapsed view, I call it, which I think is quite cool. So you have them all spread out like Smurfy does, or you can go into column views, which basically stacks them on the one side, but you can click on and open up one at a time. And that kind of opens up a window where you can see the mech visually. But you've got the, the warehouse, the new warehouse functionality on the right hand side. And you drag them straight on to that full view. Um, you do your upgrades right on that same page. Um, you know, modules and everything's been uh, much, much cleaner, much tighter. Um, you can see in your mech stats page, you can see all your quirks and everything. So um, it's, it's gonna be a huge improvement, no doubt about it. It's, it's gonna be awesome. So I'm gonna pump that up. So it's coming fairly soon. Um, hopefully in May. Hopefully public tests uh, here in April. Um, and that's your Mech Lab. And why did I bring up Mech Lab again? What were we talking about?
Uh, decals.
Decals, yeah. So once, you know, the engineers and those guys have done that, then we can tie in the uh, decals, it'll probably tie into the existing um, camel spec screen where you got the three channels there for the various colors and they'll probably reuse that functionality for the three channels of decals and, and um, away we go. So I don't have timing on that. So uh, soon trademark, right?
Soonish, yes.
Hopefully in the summer, hopefully soonish.
So I'm assuming we'll be able to show some previews of that in the not so distant future before it comes out, so people can actually see it.
Well, he said it'd be on test.
Uh, Mech Lab, yes. Um, decals, no timing on that yet, sorry.
Yeah, I know there's gonna be a lot of people that will be happy to see the Mech Lab on test. There's been a lot of requests and there's questions on the uh, doc regarding the test server. People love using it and would like to get the opportunity again. Uh, the next question is from Hawk819. He says, when can we expect the Mauler, the Black Knight and uh, Cyclops battle mechs? Also, any chance the Wolfhound and Bushwhacker will make appearance in the game? And before you answer, Russ, um, and maybe you can comment on this or confirm, uh, there's a lot of questions always. I mean, the, the, the live chat was just been swimming with them all night about when is this mech coming in? Is this mech ever gonna make it? Um, a large part of the bread and butter of this game obviously is new mechs, right? So for the most part, I think everybody, the answer is yes, except for mechs that might not make it in like four-legged mechs or 150-ton mechs or whatever. Is that about right, Russ?
Yeah, I think that's fair. Um, I, I expect that at some point, I'm not sure how long it'll take. Someone else out there can do the math with our general pacing of mech release and figure out just how much content we have until we're like out, like out, out, like finished, like um,
Dark ages, ugh.
Yeah, it's gonna take a little while yet, but yeah, I mean, I imagine we'll get all of them in. It's just kind of a matter in which timing in which they get them in. And then I suppose at some point we might have to make, make some mechs. I don't know. Um, but there's quite a few left, as you guys all know. And then there's, we've got the two Cs we can work with and other variants that'll get unlocked um, up to, you know, 30, what, 3057 and, and whatnot.
Can you address the, the mechs he brought up specifically? Cause I know people have seen the concept art for the Mauler, the, and uh, the Cyclops. I don't know what they've seen, but.
They have, eh? When did I show those?
No, I don't think they have. I haven't seen it, but.
You have too.
Yes, we have. What, why would you do that, Jared? We've seen all of it.
I'll, I'll, I'll put it to you guys like this. Um, you know, you guys know when we chose the uh, the Resistance pack, when we, you know, the Zeus and the Grasshopper Enforcer and the Panther, which by the way, I think is a pretty awesome pack. I mean, I, I really like the Resistance pack. I personally um, love playing all four of those mechs.
Which is your favorite?
Oh boy. Um, I've played the Zeus the least for sure. And just, just because um, it's, it seems awesome, but I don't play a lot of assaults. And when I have played it, I liked it. Uh, I played the Grasshopper probably the most. I played my Grasshoppers in Community Warfare a lot. And um, but I've been playing the Enforcers a ton too and kind of following the quirk built on those. And I think they're really, they're excellent. And the Panthers are just awesome PPC little machines. I see lots of them out there. So I don't know, it's tough. Honestly, I think uh, if I had to vote, I'd go oh, I'm gonna, it's, I wanna say Grasshopper, but I'm actually leaning towards Enforcer now because I just, I love 50-ton mechs. I, I play a lot of Centurions, Hunchbacks. Um, even the 45-ton ones I play a lot too. So it's gonna be Enforcer or Grasshopper. So there, that's as much as I can give you.
Alright, and also just one more quick question on future mechs. And you get this every single town hall and you can just say, no, I don't want to respond. But we get every single time, there's like a half a dozen questions about the Harmony Gold mechs. Just want to say, people are like, can you just make a deal with them, Russ? And you know?
Yeah, I'm gonna, sorry, I guess sidetracked myself there. I'd be, when we made the Resistance mechs, we actually had, what I was gonna say is we, we made some extra concept art when we're making the choice. So yeah, at the time, uh, we had made concepts for a few of those, like uh, I think the Cyclops, the Black, Black Knight, I've seen, I think we have the Mauler now. Um, uh, Wolfhound, I think is fair game. We just kind of opened things up to the 3052-ish range. Um, Bushwhacker's a little further out still, right? That's, is that a 57?
58 for, I think, yeah.
Yeah. Um, so yeah, I think some of those mechs in that list there are real close, real close, fair game. So uh, you, yeah, just there's, I think a reasonable chance we could, we could announce something on those. Um, unseen. Well, I uh, I actually, I actually reached out to Harmony Gold just the other day, just because of the whole change of the Sony Pictures, Warner Brothers to Sony Pictures thing. Um, and uh, essentially I got a really short answer back saying like, nothing's changed, you know, so they've, what, so what's, Harmony Gold has licensed out the option to, you know, these movie studios now, I guess, to make the movie, which means that the uh, you know, but essentially their rights are tied up by the movie studio. And therefore it's not even, I think, at the moment, it's not even about um, Harmony Gold saying, yeah, let's do a deal, you know, let's, I think if, if that was the case, I might even uh, they, they know. I mean, I could, they might even have done a deal with me and say, okay, sure, why don't you pay us this much and away we go. But I think they're in, I think they're in a position now where it's not even really up in their hands to say, yeah, let's do a deal with Prana Games. I think it's more on the lines of, hey, we've licensed other options. Uh, you know, not in our hands right now. It's in the hands of Sony or whatever. So um, it's not gonna happen, probably. Uh, it's just, just not gonna happen. So basically um, our only really option is just to avoid them or go for it, create them, much like we did the, the re-seens and the Wolverines and, you know, the Griffins and Shadow Hawks and those ones. And just make sure they're changed enough from the originals and, you know, the names we already own from a BattleTech McWarrior standpoint and go for it. And then when, you know?
Uh, you just rustled my jimmies.
Make sure we have enough money set aside to defend our decision. So as you can imagine, that's a, that's a tough call to make.
Alright, so speaking of mechs, and this sort of rolls into the next question, which is from PsychoSmurf96. And he says, the Urban mech was fan request mech that seemed to go really well. Um, is there any chance that we could get more fan demand of mechs in the future? And I do want to preface this. I also saw a question that said, have you guys thought about posting to the community uh, different mech packs, like let's say Sets4 or whatever? And the community chooses the, the mech packs and then you guys put them up for sale or whatever and raise the funds, sort of like how you did with the Erby. Have you thought about that?
Well, not a lot. Um, just because I'm not sure there's many opportunities like the Erby. I mean, someone might say, well, geez, you know, we really want the Kodiak or this or that. Um, we, I'm sure you'll get that mech and I'm sure it'll end up in a, in a pack at some point, you know, like we said, most of them will. So the only real reason to do that again is A, if it's a mech that probably would never make its way into a pack, or at least not for a really long time. And Urban mech was in that bucket, not just, not because it's bad. I think as we've seen, it's actually a pretty good little mech in our game, but you know, it's your mech, right? It was, it's, didn't really have a reputation as being like, you gotta have this mech. So it was a very special one-off situation. I'm not sure what else is in that category. Um, so otherwise, then it just comes down to um, letting people choose what format pack they want to make. I suppose we could give that some thought and think about it. I just don't know how much of a difference it would make. Um, I guess uh, in the end, you know, I, it, it would be the same difference, meaning, you know, everyone votes and then we make pretty much the same pack we would have chosen anyhow, based on the next most desirable mechs and we sell pretty much the exact same amount of them anyhow. And yeah, I don't know if it's, I don't know.
They're, they're, they're really, I mean, the Urban mech is extremely unique. I don't know how to apply that same sort of love from the community to another mech. But I mean, other than like, everybody wants that 150-ton mech or whatever, you know, but yeah.
Yeah, sorry. It's the best I can do for you on that question.
The next question is from EgoMain. He says, when do the European players get their promised MWO release event? Promised? I don't know, but anyway.
Yeah, I don't know. I guess EgoMain would have to remind us of a promised aspect. I think he probably referring to kind of way back in the IGP, kind of even the early IGP days, there was uh, there was talk of, yeah, you know, we'd like to have a, we'd like to have a European release event. But I think that's, you know, I think I'm gonna have to hide behind the that was IGP mantra on that one, just because there is some validity to that when they always talked about um, you know, putting a data center in, in Europe, but then
Right.
they realized that um, that wasn't gonna work. And so they, they didn't do it. Um, and there was also some, you know, they, they, for a while IGP had explored licensing it out to uh, um, other publishing companies in Europe. And they kind of explored a lot of various things over the years that nothing really panned out while IGP had it. And so now that, now that, you know, IGP's gone for the last um, has it been six, seven months now? Whatever it's been. Um, we've been obviously pretty busy just making, getting Community Warfare done and getting all the features done. So um, I don't know what the world holds for Europe now or a European launch event. I think uh, my, my European priority at this moment that I'd like to do, and this is not a promise from me to you, is um, putting a couple servers in Europe and letting European players play on local servers with local pings. Now, of course, everyone's just gonna say, woo, why haven't you done that already? Do it right now. Sounds great. There's a trade off. And this is the kicker is, okay, when all those Europeans players play on the European servers, now we've, remember this word I keep throwing up? Hey guys, more buckets. We can't afford to create more buckets. And you know, when we create a new game mode, we can't afford to create more buckets. Well, that would be another very big bucket, right? You're basically cutting the player base in half, playing in Europe and playing in North America. So things might change after Steam launch for our ability to do that. But right now, that would be the kind of unacceptable trade off. So we've talked about some solutions, but it would probably, it would probably mean that there'd be some logic on our side where it says, okay, well, it's, you know, at certain times of the day is, is like, everybody in this match um, in Europe? Okay, great. Let's, let's play, let them connect to a European server or, you know, or vice versa and having some logic like that. So essentially you're keeping all the players in a, in a, in a single pool. But hopefully allowing um, more consistently players to play with local pings, um, especially at certain times of the day. But sometimes you might have to uh, you might, as a, as a North American player, maybe if you're home from work that day and playing at noon, would you be willing to play on a German server and have a ping of 150 instead of your normal 30? Right? So that's the question. Then of course, you know, Aussies is, is even worse. Um, and
Poor Aussies.
And there's less players there as well, right? So they're a, they're a smaller bucket. They can't really exist on their own, really. So tough problem. And that's why these things take time. Sometimes it's not just like, why doesn't Piranha just pony up a grand and buy a server in Europe? Well, that's the least of it, right? It's, it's about figuring out the matchmaking dilemma and how that would work. That's, that's, that's what takes the time. That's, that's what stays our hand from putting servers in Europe, not the cost or the, you know, the, the complexity of setting up a data center or even the coding work of making our players connect to a European server.
Sure. Well, if the European launch party ever does happen, Phil and Darren, European mech vacation, just saying. Anyway, Phil, next question?
Uh, I do have a question in regards uh, along with the Euro or MW launch event. Have you guys thought about doing another, maybe not launch event, but just another MW gathering of some sort?
Yes, I would, I'm, I'll just throw this out there that I am, I'm looking at September with a lot of interest and could be PAX Prime. Could be a one-off standalone event like last time, like we had in um, San Francisco. My ideal situation would be to have a Steam launch party in September, which is not just launching Steam, but is also the culmination of a tournament, like the finals. So unlike last time where all the battles would happen at the party, we would have preliminaries in the month or so leading up. And then just have the finals at the, at the Steam launch event with um, cash prizes. And then just have the finals at the, at the Steam launch event with, um, cash prizes and everything. So that would be my dream and that's what I'm working on. So again, disclaimer, I don't know if it'll happen for sure, but I'd like it to. So I'm, I'm working on that.
All right. So this is gonna be the last question. I think we're gonna move to live questions after this, uh, if you're down for it. But last question we have, Imperius says, a director or replay and spectator mode gives the community creation tools and helps build and strengthen community interactions. Um, you did mention spectator tool earlier. Um, you know, when is priority or any type of resources gonna be dedicated towards this?
Yeah, I mean, I can't speak to the director replay right now, but spectator mode is gonna be getting priority sometime real soon. I mean, obviously if I wanna have my party and if I wanna have preliminaries in the month or two leading up to it, I need to spend some time on our spectator tools between now and say, uh, midsummer. So sometime in the next couple of months, it's gonna get, uh, it's gonna get some time. So it's gonna get some general improvements, you know, just general tweaks and hotkeys and, you know, HUD and various improvements. And, um, there's also gonna be hopefully some admin improvements where we've done, you know, some work where the, the actual commentators and admin aspects of the spectator will actually, uh, guide the private match criteria and, um, launch the match and do some things like that. Uh, I'd also like to add the Community Warfare game modes into the private match screen because in a tournament, we might want to utilize full-blown, you know, uh, dropship mode, forty-eight versus forty-eight battles, you know? So yes, it's gonna, I'd say, oh, I don't know, in the next, uh, thirty to sixty days, I'd like to, uh, spend a, you know, have, uh, probably Mr. Buckton, who's worked on it in the past, and a few other guys would put some time into the, the spectator tools. So that it's, you know, um, reasonably improved, uh, leading up to that event for our preliminaries and for the, of course, the event itself. So yes, that'll, spectator will be getting some work, uh, long overdue work fairly soon.
All right, we've already gone, um, well past two hours, like we do every single time. Uh, Russ, are you up for taking some live questions? And you also mentioned there was something you wanted to touch on.
Well, I just wanna mention a couple of things I had here in my list. So I think I've mentioned most of these things on Twitter or people have learned about them. But so the reinforcements that are in the store right now, the ones that are on sale, the twelve mech reinforcements, they're on sale right now till Tuesday, as you guys know. And then on the patch on Tuesday, they all come out and come into the regular, um, uh, client in the in-game store for MC and C-bills. Um, we are going to be adding, um, ten new variants that will start life out in the store, like the other ones. So they're, in a sense, they're being replaced by another wave, not just Clan. Um, I think it's, I wanna say seven Clan variants and three, um, InnerSphere. Uh, there is one, one mech in particular I think people will enjoy, and that is the, uh, we are introducing the, help me out here, the Griffin Two-N?
Yes, with ECM?
Yes. Yeah. So the, the ECM capable Griffin Two-N. I'd like it, I'd like it to, you know, so this is, um, gonna be available April twenty-first. And I guess obviously it'll become a, well, it's an ECM medium, right? Fifty-five ton medium. And that'll, that'll help in the Community Warfare scene, I think, when you've got, uh, you know, lots of Hellbringers around. So it's true that to begin with, it will begin life only in the, the store, which is of course just like real money cash purchase. So the question will come up like, well, that's pay to win. Well, I'd answer it the same way as always, is after a few months, eventually it will become available for MC and C-bills for free for C-bills in the game. And it's really no different than the first several months that the Hellbringer spent as only being available, uh, you know, as a package purchase ECM heavy. Uh, so it'll, it'll need to spend a couple of months in that way. So if you buy it in the gift store, you'd be supporting us and we'd be appreciating that. But yeah, I'm excited about that. And I forget the other variants is
Catafract One, uh, the X-one or O-one, experimental.
Yeah, one X.
Oh, are you, oh, nevermind.
No, that's not, that's not one of those ten.
No, no, I was saying is the other option that you guys were looking for.
Yeah, no, the, the other ten, the other nine that we're introducing, there's a Griffin Two-N and then there's, um, I don't have that list in front of me, but I think there's seven more.
Do you want me to list them off for you?
No, uh, that's, sure, go ahead. People can go nuts and they can look them all up. Go.
And just let me, no, no, I'm pulling them up right now. No, I've got them right here. It's, uh, so we've got the Locust Three-V, the, uh, Mist Links, um, we've got the Mist Links D. And then moving up, we have the Ice Ferret, um, Ice Ferret B. And then moving from that, we have the Nova, um, B is Nova C. Then as well as we have the Highlander Seven Three Two-B, um, the Storm Crow. Let me go ahead and grab this one right here, the Storm Crow B, um, the Timber Wolf, um, Timber Wolf. Just a second, just pulling it up.
Someone just said CTF Zero-X in chat. Yes, that's what Phil is referring to, but that is not one of the ten.
Yeah, sorry, that was my screw.
We were also discussing it as a possible ECM mech for InnerSphere, but no, we have not introduced that yet. We're doing the, uh, the Griffin Two-N.
The Timber Wolf, uh, A, uh, variant, and then as well as the Gargoyle, um, B. So that is, I believe that's everything, unless I'm missing something.
Yeah, go ahead and, um, well, Tina, if she's still listening, she can throw that up in the forums. You guys can put it on your NGNG forums if you want as well. And we'll, there you go. So I think there's gonna be some new toys to play with there. And, um, so this is sort of like, not like a full-blown mech pack when we do this, but it's just kind of like a mini pack, um, helps. Um, you know, certainly helps with, with, uh, you know, funding the game to have these variants in the gift store for a little while and then coming out for C-bills. Um, there will be, I'll say this, there, I, I, I do think we'll introduce a new InnerSphere pack, um, on May first, um, for preorder. Now that we've, uh,
New, new, you mean?
Yeah, like a Resistance Two.
Ooh, that was asked a lot in chat tonight.
Yeah, Resistance Two, um, now that the Urban Mech's out, we'd like to have, have no more than two active programs at any given time, uh, for obvious reasons, for our capacity, plus just, you know, trying to make sure you guys can still put food on your tables and things like that. Um, just joking, but you know, it's, that's, uh, that's, that's as much as, you know, we have capacity for too. So, uh, we'll have the, obviously the, um, Wave Three mech start to be delivered in June. So usually about one month prior to the other one's delivery is about the timing we introduce another, uh, preorder. So it'll be four new InnerSphere mechs. And, um, yeah, I mean, I, I won't tell you any more than that right now, I don't think. I'm gonna, okay, I'll tell you this, there's gonna be a light, a medium, a heavy and an assault.
I've seen him there. Oh my God, sexy. Okay, that's enough.
Uh, one more thing for Clanners. I mentioned this in Twitter, but some of you might not have heard. So on the twenty-first, this coming Tuesday, there will be, um, I hope I got this right, but you'll be able to buy faction skins for all Clan mechs. So Clan Wave One will be able to buy faction skins. And all of the channels have been unlocked. So that's good. You guys have been crying about that for a long time. Sorry, I didn't say crying. You guys have been asking politely on Twitter over and over and over and over and over again, if you could have that. So now you have it. Um,
Does that include the Invasion, uh, variants? Like for instance, the Invasion, cause that's, that's been a big contention to a lot of people.
You're hurting me, Phil. You're making me hurt. No, it's a good question. Um, all Clan Wave One. But no, Invasion, that's a, that's a separate issue. The, like, if you wanna go Invasion, Resistance, uh, Phoenix, Founders, those are all, you know, quote unquote, special versions, kind of like the Collector's Edition Erby. That is not done yet. I, I know we're going to, it's something we're gonna do, but it's just a little, another, you know, retrofitting work because those also have the custom geometry, which means that we have to do at least a little bit of work to adjust the textures to accommodate for the custom geometry so that they can work. So no, not those ones yet.
I think it isn't necessarily that I can't put camo on the Invasion. It's the fact of it's that third tertiary color is locked. And so you literally only have one and two, and the majority of the mech is usually, usually that gunmetal gray or, you know, so a lot of people have requested to have that third channel open, just an idea.
Hmm. Yeah, I'm not really sure if, if that's the easy thing or if there's work involved in that or not. But yeah, I guess that's something a little different. What I'd like to do with all those quote unquote special mechs is, um, sure, we can unlock all the channels and I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that. Um, but I'd also like to make it, and this, I guess would apply to HeroMechs too, because HeroMechs right now can only run their own custom skin. And really it comes down to the custom geometry again, that's on, um, the heroes. I mean, that, not all heroes would contain custom geometry, I don't think. I'm getting myself a little confused here, but basically I would like to see a day where, you know, a guy with a Yen Lo Wang. And if you want to take it off and put, you know, a faction skin on your Yen Lo Wang, that you can do that. Um, but it's just only Yen Lo Wang will be able to put its own skin back on itself. So these are all aspects of retrofitting that I wanna get to. Um, I think the next priority though for us would be, um, I'm making, getting, getting the faction skins onto, uh, the rest of the InnerSphere mech. So, uh, we're, the top priority right now is not these special mechs like the Invasion mechs and, and working on those. I think now that we've got all the Clan mechs to work with faction skins, the priority is to get all the, all the other InnerSphere mechs to work with faction skins. And then we can work on these special mechs and HeroMechs and unlocking more channels and making them more flexible.
All right, Russ, you, uh, you got chat open? Are you willing to take a few questions?
Yeah, um, let's go.
All right, guys, spam the questions. He'll, uh, he'll look through them, sort through them and answer what he wants. We just put it in slow mode, so everybody can't.
It's, it's been in slow, but I did forty seconds instead of twenty, cause I will say though, our subscribers aren't affected by slow mode, just.
Here's a little bit. We're gonna have our first HeroMech in a long time in May, at least that's the plan. Just tossing that out there.
Oh, nice.
I'm thinking Wolverine or Thunderbolt. Hmm.
For my birthday, for Phil's birthday.
Yeah, someone else has said AS7S for C-bills. I thought the new AS7S and the Centurion AH were already out for C-bills. I was like, that caught me and Madoff Car. That just like slipped under the radar. It was in the game for MC only. So yes, I think actually the plan on Tuesday, the twenty-first, is to also unlock those two mechs for C-bills. So there you go. Oh yeah, and I'm gonna toss this out there. I think you'll as well like the, uh, Griffin Two-N build. I think it's gonna be kind of mean. I mean, I don't know. What do you think, Phil? I mean, I think
Yes.
It's, yeah, I mean, you got, I'm just gonna tell them.
Tell them, tell them the hard points, cause it's pretty ludicrous.
The hard points, as I understand it, is, uh, two missile in the left torso, two missile in the right torso, and two energy in the right arm. So, you know, you could see some, what are we gonna see? Like four SRM four, two, you know, pulse laser type?
It's gonna be a mean brawler, yeah.
All right, these are still cruising by. Do you guys wanna pick something out now or?
Um, obviously I see questions about LBX ammo swap. I see collisions ETA.
MC, uh, could, can people ever spend MC in the store? Will that ever be on the horizon?
Hmm, no, I don't know. I, I haven't really thought about that frankly. Um, there's a Storm Crow with like a six energy arm now, right? That's gonna be stupid. Who put that in the game? Why would they do that? Oh, okay, um, actually collisions, I'll talk on that a bit. I, I, it's an important thing for me. So we got, you know, one of our engineers, Nima, you've all heard of him. He's a HSR guy, great guy, great programmer. Hi, Nima, if you're listening. Um, he's been really busy. He's, uh, uh, let's see, right now he's working on a really important task of improving the, basically the backend underlying code around MechLab. We got this new MechLab coming, but we've got this nasty crappy, you know, underlying code that is creating the, you know, quote unquote invalid bug where you, you get the, it says your mech doesn't have an engine.
Oh, oh yeah, we know.
It does. And it happens a lot, right? And that's, so he's working on that right now. And then as part of that is just speeding all that underlying code up. So, you know, saving a mech, when you, you know, when you're saving out your changes, like all that underlying stuff, just trying to clean all that up and just make it just way, way better. So that's obviously a really high priority right now because A, it's been, it's been sucking way too long. And especially now with the new MechLab coming out. So he's on that. And then I'd like to get him back on to some HSR stuff. Uh, there, we, we've identified at least one area we'd like to improve. And that's something to do with, I'm not very, you know, we need Nima to explain, but basically lasers and the burn time versus server time potentially could be creating issues. So wanna work on that. And then, um, I'd all, I'd like to, I'd like to believe that I'd be able to put him on, um, some collision. But I know there's gonna be some distractions there for his work on phase three of Community Warfare. So we're not talking imminent here. Um, between those things I mentioned is phase three work, um, it might be, you know, late summer before I can actually, uh, get someone working on, on the collision issue again. And I'd like to at least get it, my first priority would be so mechs can collide with other mechs. I won't say knockdowns yet, but just proper collisions with other mechs. So you don't, right now you, you collide with other mechs, but you know, you get that really bad sort of rubber band snap, which is awful. So that'd be our first priority on the collision thing. So, uh, that is that. So do you guys see any other good questions?
Hmm, sorting through right now.
Um, I will tell everybody this, right now we're debating amongst ourselves how to handle the Resistance Two packages. We'd like to do something a little different. We don't wanna do necessarily the exact same things again. We'd like to freshen it up, provide new value for you, the customer. Uh, we think people will still see value, of course, in receiving the faction skins for the new mechs. Um, beyond that, uh, you know, when it comes to the badges and cocked items and various things, we'd love to freshen that up, but we're kind of looking for ideas. So I guess you guys could, um, talk about that over the coming weeks. And, you know, we might run across some of your ideas that are, are good and we'd love to, love to consider that. Someone just said Union Class. That's an exciting thing. Um, uh, we're not quite done with it yet. Um, I'm hoping to make use of it in a future, um, game mode. You know, perhaps even in this future public queue game mode, I mentioned that a little bit, defending maybe the powered down Union Class for a certain amount of time. Uh, one team defending it, maybe five minutes in, it powers up its lasers, ten minutes in, it powers up its, you know, PBCs or, and then if you protect it long enough, survive long enough till it powers up, you win. That's just a brief mine, you know, dump there. But that would be, uh, you know, that, uh, Union Class would be cool. It's gonna get done. I just don't know when yet. It's, uh, you know, mechs and some of the things take priority and all this retrofitting. But yeah, I think even if it's, this is a cool showpiece like that, like in a particular game mode or, you know, you just see it coming down, landing at the end of a game mode to signify like reinforcements are here. Just is to be really cool. I don't know if we'll ever use it for sure to actually drop mechs off, just because I'm trying to figure out how the, you know, the complexity of having like three levels of mechs in that thing and trying to get everyone to like walk out the few doors without just constantly trolling each other inside of the dropship. It'd be, it'd be difficult. But I think there's still a lot of value in just having it, watching it, seeing it, you know, land, take off, uh, cinematic effect, et cetera.
What about a, a stock mode? Uh, a lot of people have been asking about that. We had some on the document, um, even just private matches.
Private only. Yeah, I, I think, um, I, I did see the document. There's some really cool ideas. I mean, you'll know what I'll say again, like on the, on the top level is just like, we can't create another bucket. No other buckets. It just can't.
Right.
But in private match screen, yeah, that's, that's interesting, you know, just basically, I think the way it would work and it's just find time to make it a priority is if you click that on the match, then the, you wouldn't have to go into MechLab and click the stock button and totally reconfigure your mech to stock. I believe you would just, if you click the stock button on the private match screen, when the server's loading your mech, let's say you have a Hunchback 4G that's fully customized, it would just load the default loadout instead. Ignore basically what your build is and just give you boom, stock. So that would be fairly easy, right? You wouldn't have to go in and monkey around in MechLab. It would just do it. So that'd be cool. I'd love to see, um, you know, stock mode tournaments where people, especially maybe they're running, you know, all IS, you know, thirty twenty-five stock mode only. So you got your Atlases and Janors and Hunchbacks and kind of the originals. thirty twenty-five stock mode only. So you got your atlases and Janers and Hunchbacks and kind of the originals all running stock. That'd be really cool. I think there's, um, you know, I think it would be exposed though, eh, pretty quickly. I mean, it, it'd be pretty clear like, well, this one is way better than
Mm hmm.
those ones in its stock configuration. So now we've got a whole new definition of meta. We've got stock mode meta. And unless you're taking these three mechs in stock mode, you suck and you're a noob.
Um, I don't think stock mode would be well received in a public queue, uh, to be honest. Yeah, no.
It needs to be private matches, in my opinion as well. You did, breaking up the, the buckets, yeah, just not a good idea. I'm just looking for a few more, um, what about, did you already touch on the, the whole, uh, the idea of the clan LBX swapping the ammo? Is that kind of a dead idea concept?
Well, it's just dead because this is unfortunate, but someone who used to work here who doesn't now, who created some of the weapon code, things are done in such a way that it would take, let's just say very valuable, significant resources um, to make that happen. And when I weigh that against what I get in the game, I, I just, I'm not at a point where I see the trade off as being a win yet. So at some point that is gonna change. And we've got some higher priority things done. And I say, okay, yeah, let's do it. Um, but right now I just, it's, this is not worth the trade off. Sorry.
How about, um, multiple drop decks for Community Warfare? Just being able to have them kind of, you know, ready to go. So you can switch easily or something instead of the individual mechs.
Yeah, I think, um, I got a couple of top, you know, there's two top priority things that, you know, we need just from a, a monetary sort of generation generating aspect of MechWar Online. I mean, we need to get, um, we need to get in uh, multiple drop decks and I, I think we would provide, um, I don't know for sure. Like obviously you get at least the one furry one, maybe, maybe even a couple for free, but maybe the option to buy some more beyond that. That's just a very top level thinking. And then of course the, the decals, um, is another aspect. Um, I'm gonna, I, I've been just watching chat here a little bit. I've seen two people talk about game crashes. Um, absolutely. Those are top priority for us right now. We actually feel like we fixed a ton lately and our mech, our current QA lab here hasn't crashed in like, uh, I don't know. Well, it's, it's crazy man twenty-three here who's mentioned like three times in a row. I think he's the only guy that said it. And yeah, but right now we're like, we're like extremely, extremely stable and we're, we don't crash anymore. No, obviously crazy man twenty-three is still crashing. So here's my only message to anyone out there that still gets a crash. First I'd say, make sure you understand the difference between a crash and a disconnect. If you get, you know, sent back to the login screen or something like that, that's, that's just define that as disconnect. That's different. And there's, and a disconnect can sometimes happen completely because of your internet connection to our servers and such. But a crash, of course, like boom, you're down to your desktop, totally different. Now, the next thing I'd say is, are you still running in the thirty-two bit client? If you have the ability to run sixty-four, please do. There's a very real chance that on a lot of computers, that if you're running thirty-two bit client, you will get some crashes, cause you will have memory problems. Um, Windows is just, the first thing we should probably phase out would be thirty-two bit, because thirty-two bit Windows just does not manage memory very well. You're capped out at like, someone help me, y'all, you computer file guys like.
It's basically four. It's four gigs.
It just, it runs out. So there, there can be crashes and those things, we try to do what we can. We reduce our memory footprint, basically in, in, in every way possible, but there is still a chance if you're in thirty-two bit, you'll crash. I'm not sure how much more we can help that frankly with, you know, the size of the games, the textures and everything. So we'll continue to try it as long as we can. Now, um, I think he said he's in sixty-four bit. So the last thing I'll just say is if you are crashing the desktop, you're in sixty-four bit. Um, please send us your crash dumps. Um, if there's anyone out there still crashing, send in your crash dumps. My understanding is that there's new, um, uh, there's new, uh, way of submitting your, your crash dumps, uh, however it is.
Yeah, the crash log.
Yeah. Get your crash dumps to us and with information, send them every time you get one. And we will absolutely look at those crash dumps and we'll do anything we can to fix, fix them. So my understanding, how, how is it the crash dump thing? If you crash, is it ask you to submit it now or how does that work? I haven't seen it yet personally.
I haven't crashed since the new, yeah.
Yeah, I haven't either. So, um, email it. First off, it's in your like, uh, uh, what's it called again? Um, it's in your save games stuff now, uh, if you're on Windows, it's like, yeah, user, uh, users and then, um, my name, it'd be your name in your case. And then where is it? Saved games. And inside of the MechWar Online folder, I believe. Uh, open. I'm trying to find. Yeah. And inside your save game or your MechWar Online folder, there's crashdump dot DMP. Send that to support. If you can't find the automatic submission method, then make sure you email that to support. Um, uh, you can search the forums or the patch notes and find out about the automatic submission method, but please submit your crash dumps. We'd love to fix them, uh, for sure. So there you go. That's, um, that's, that's that. Uh,
Hopefully that gets.
Yeah. If there's a few of you out there still experiencing crash dumps, send them in or it crashes, cause maybe there's one or two more uh, rare ones out there that you have the right machine for and we can get them fixed and that'll help everybody.
You're helping the entire community when you do that.
Yeah, thank you. Please take the time to do that. Um, I saw another one.
Well, I grabbed four from chat. If you want me to just run through them real quick, you can maybe do.
Keep in mind to send your crash dumps to support at MWmerk.com as well. There's the email.
Yeah, not, not directly to Russ. Um, so real quick, Russ, if you want, are these off? You can answer unless you had something specific you wanted to.
Well, just someone said something about DX eleven and here I just, I do believe.
DX twelve.
Well, I'm talking about DX eleven. Um, I think we have something coming in a, in a, in a, in a soon patch. Watch the patch notes for a an improvement to DX eleven, whereas on some kind of modest machines, DX eleven would run at a noticeably slower pace than DX nine. I think there's they've made an improvement to that. So anyhow, uh, go on.
All right. Uh, just real quick, if you wanna touch on, you know, to do lengthy answers, uh, some people have been asking about, oh, I know, I know kind of your official stance on this, but you've, I'm sure heard a few of the custom sounds. People have been messing with their, their files and doing some custom sounds. But people also wanna know about like custom warhorns and so forth. Any possibilities for custom sounds or warhorns?
Well, you remember, anything we add to the game, like meaning, uh, a warhorn sound has to be downloaded by every single person on earth that plays our game, right? It's gotta be in everyone's machine. Otherwise they won't hear it. Only you would hear it. So there are some things, first off, if you, if you edit your pack files and that's against the terms of service, just don't do it. And if you do it in your own little machine in your pack file, don't make a video about it. Just laugh at it, at your own machine and then just keep it to yourself. But uh, then, um, if we, if, there is a possibility though, that we do potentially do some client side only stuff. So it's kinda like the 4K texture pack. I mean, it doesn't mean everybody has to download 4K textures, of course, right? It's just for you on your machine. So I suppose that, this is kinda where like custom colored lasers or cockpit glass or, uh, sound effects for warhorns. I suppose you, we could get into a situation of selling some things that only the person that bought it downloads it. But, you know, there's server authentication stuff and there's, there's some other things. So I, I can't really talk that very well. It's, it's not something I spend a lot of time thinking about. So sorry, that's all I got for you.
Colorblind mode, any, anything new on that?
Yeah, I know that's come up a bit more recently. It's, it's been coming up since the beginning and we've always been aware of it. And I'm sorry, we just haven't been able to, uh, to make it a priority to, you know, try and do that. I don't have a better answer for you. I, I guess we could ask, uh, you know, our famous community manager Tina to gather some, some stats on that. Um, there, you know, there's, there's, usually there's some things that some people want that are very, um, maybe not that common of an issue, but are still, you know, very important to those that, that need it. I know we just recently finished off some, uh, um, fixes for, um, three D, uh, three D HUD. Um, so there's a few out there that have been waiting for that for a long time. So that's, that's good. Um, colorblind stuff. I don't have an answer. Just like, yeah, I know, I wanna do that. Sorry. That's all I got.
Yeah, no problem. I think.
Well, I, I wouldn't, yeah, I don't really understand the problem. I mean, obviously I understand what blindness is, but I guess I would need them to define what areas of the game are the most problematic from, you know, not having the, uh, the colorblind proof.
Well, I was just gonna suggest that maybe the people that are having this issue, contact Tina at, uh, feedback at MWmerk.com and basically let her know what they need, what they want, you know, what the issues are so that it can be, uh, investigated further. That sound good?
Yeah. And G4 Real Fight says, how about making the game playable for the blind? Um, try. Yeah, try.
Hey Darren, hold on. You're, you're totally screwed up right now. He's, uh, his packets are up to like forty-two percent loss. Yeah, dude, you're done. Um, let's see. Have you seen anything else in there, Russ, that, uh, you wanna address?
No, it's it. The guys, they said in chat that they're done. They have nothing else.
Question, um, I think I saw was UI, in-game UI. Have you guys, uh, obviously you're updating the mech, uh, MechLab. You know, have you guys thought about updating, you know, in-game UI? Has that been something that you've thought about? Getting sort of that more, uh, you know, immersion using some of those monitors, stuff like that?
Yeah, um, shit, you're right. I mean, that comes up sometimes. Also, love to make a new pilot model. We know it sucks. Um, sucked since the beginning and it's just there. It's, you don't see a lot of it, but we'd like to, um, like to fix that. Uh, so there, um, I thought of one other thing when you said that.
Ooh, ejecting.
By the way, um, this, I don't know if it's this coming Tuesday or if it'd be the next patch, but we finally added in the, um, HUD narc beacon indicator. So if you have been narked, you will get, uh, flashing narc thingamabobber in your corner, like just saying you've been narked.
So now you know. So now you'll know when or why all the LREbs. Gotcha. So, uh, and again, and that goes back to a question about the, the HUD that sort of, you mentioned, uh, possibly like having an ejection sequence, just local or something like that. Obviously immersion or whatever. It's not like you, you know, run around as a little dude on the battlefield. But, you know, have you guys thought about that? Sort of like the drop ship? You know, dropping you guys off just for the immersion factor?
Yeah, I think I mentioned at the beginning as the broadcast, um, he, sorry if I, if I heard your question right, the new River City, I think will be the first one to display that. So we'll, when we reintroduce the new River City, um, when you go in, I'd, yeah, you know, there'll be each land. So we dropped off in a leopard class drop ship and just fly away. And it's just, just purely out of the, you know, initial drop immersion.
All right. I think I'm back. And, uh, just real quick, uh, another question that was asked a lot of times, artificial intelligence, tanks, infantry, aerospace.
No, you're not back. Just stop. Uh, AI, artificial intelligence infantry tanks. Uh, we touched on this last time.
Yeah, PVE basically, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna get out this tutorial. And I think when everyone plays the new tutorial, they're gonna be like, oh my goodness, cause it's just gonna just tantalize everyone and go, I, I can see now, you know, I can start to envision, you know, PVE and, you know, AI and stuff. So that will be basically the first step, you know, and then we'd like to expand upon it from that. Maybe you're, you know, burning down infantry with flamers and, you know, dealing with helicopters and tanks and then moving on to mechs from there and then, you know, teams of mechs from there. So like everything with our game, it's an ongoing process. Um, that's the way we like to do things. It's, it makes sense for us. It's, we don't wanna just disappear for, you know, eighteen months and show up with a different game. I think it's just an ongoing, non-stop, ongoing process. And we, we're gonna do that with, um, working towards PVE and single player too.
All right. Last question I have for you, Clan Hero Mechs, when?
I don't know. I don't know. That's a harder one because they, the Omni mechs kind of screw everything up, you know, there's all the different omnipods and all that kinda stuff. And we have to kind of redefine what a hero mech is, cause the original, for an IS, it's, it has a custom skin, which obviously we can do for clans too. But it's a custom hardpoint loadout on the hero mech, which is harder on the clans, because you have all those variants, all the different omnipods and you can create so many combinations that it's, you know, I haven't really sat down and put it to the test and see for sure, but it, it's, that's the deterrent there. And I think there was also a notion that we wanted to finish off kind of the original your hero ones first, or, or inner sphere ones first. So there's not a lot left. You guys know more than me probably, but there's, there's the Wolverine. Um, there's the Thunderbolt. Uh, anything else? Help me out here. Someone knows. Tell me.
Uh, yeah.
Not counting resistance mech. So let's, I don't wanna make clanners wait even longer. So not counting resistance. I'm, off the top of my head, I can think of those two. And, uh, that might be it. Did I forget one? I'm just watching chat. Someone's gonna, someone's gonna know. But anyhow, um, so there's your answer. It's like soon, uh, we, we do the last couple IS ones and then we'll figure it out. You know, we'll figure out something for the clans because, uh, sure, nobody wants to sell you a herald, uh, timber wolf more than me. So we'll get it figured out.
How do I sound now?
Someone said Battlemaster, but we have the Hellslinger, right? And the Battlemaster. True, no King Crab, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep that one out of, I'm gonna keep the Erbi and the King Crab out, kinda like Resistance two. So we'll just stick with the other ones, Phoenix and older basically, or I don't know. Um, yeah. So a couple more IS ones first.
Okay. We did just get a quick, uh, report from Alexander G. He said the crash reports are not out yet.
Oh, okay. So the automatic submission thing is not out yet?
I'm assuming that's what he's referring to. Yes.
I wonder if that's an April twenty-first thing. So I don't know, guys, but email your, email your crash dumps for now. They, they got that other thing coming soon though, which will help a lot.
Well, guys, this is almost gone three hours. Uh, Russ, thank you, sir. Much appreciated.
Yeah, thanks guys. Sorry about the delay between town halls. Um, looking forward to MechLab and all that stuff. So hopefully will, that'll all come out as we hope it will in, you know, upcoming patches. And, you know, we'll do another one of these. Um, you know, maybe in the sort of, I don't know, third week of May or something about a month from now. Um, or not, we'll see, but we'll play it by ear. I just, I wanna have these when there's a lot to talk about and there certainly was a lot to talk about now. Um, there's always a lot to talk about, I guess.
And, uh, Alex is saying it's not the twenty-first, you know, it'll be soon.
Alex, when, man? Geez. He doesn't know. He's probably just getting, uh, making sure it's good to go before it comes out. So maybe May fifth. And then now Alex will say, Alex just said it's not May fifth. Okay. Soon, guys, email your, your crash dumps for now.
All right. Thank you, Zees. Thank you, Russ. Thank you, everybody in the live studio audience. And Phil, take us out.
And of course, again, uh, I have to just sort of reiterate, thank you guys for coming and hanging out and listening and being a part of the town hall. It's always good to get some numbers out here. I think we're six hundred plus. If you are new to the channel, hit that follow button. That way you guys get email notifications when we go live. And of course, if you don't follow us on Twitter and Facebook, I'd highly recommend that. But quick shout out to you guys. Uh, Russ, you specifically, thanks for, uh, taking the time out of your night for doing this. And of course, we will continue to bug you for another one. Cause that's what we do behind the scenes. We bugger us all the time. That, that's our, that's our opera, you know, operation.
Our secondary job, yes.
Yeah. Anyways, anyways, again, guys, have a great day. This has been a town hall meeting with Russ Balak. We'll be doing another one hopefully in a month. And of course, uh, you know, continuing up with things. So, uh, yeah, just wanna say thank you guys for chilling and hanging out. I'm gonna go ahead and start some MechWar Online. So if you wanna watch some mech porn.
What? Yeah, definitely. Everybody needs to stick around. Don't leave. Watch Phil, uh, perform some mech porn, but also don't forget this town hall, if you missed it, it will be available on YouTube tomorrow as well as SoundCloud for those of you that wanna listen to it as a podcast. So everything will be out there. Plus Zees's notes are on Reddit. So go if you wanna get the breakdown, uh, word for word. Thank you again, Zees. Check that out.
All right, guys. Have a great night. We'll see you next time.
Bye.
Bye.
Until next time, MechWires, peace.